We'll begin our meeting at 7:30 with the new Av Bike Way presentation. In addition, we will have Gwen Wright from the Montgomery County Planning Department. She's the director, will join us to talk about a minor master plan for Tacoma Park and planning and race equity. Our voting session on the 22nd will be the first reading election ordinance. Tentatively, we'll have the second reading of the tree canopy, the tree ordinance. Our first reading ordinance approving FY21 budget amendment number one. A resolution providing for appointments to the Tacoma Park Youth Council. A resolution approving submission of MML legislative action requests. And our work session that evening, tentatively scheduled is an assessment of park quality, accessibility, and race. And a check in on our COVID-19 response. Then on Wednesday, July 29th, we will have a voting session, which will be the second reading of amendment, charter amendment resolution, enabling the city's election to be conducted by mail. First reading ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail. Second reading election ordinance, second reading ordinance approving FY21 budget amendment number one. And resolution providing for the city council summer recess. So after the 29th, the city council is on recess until Wednesday, September 16th. So that's our upcoming. Before we turn things over to our youth council, I did want to share, we've shared this on social media, but I thought it would be nice to kick off our meeting with a video and a reminder to wear masks that was produced by, at the University of Maryland, by a resident in Tacoma Park. And you may recognize some of the people in the video, so I thought we would share that this evening. And I hope folks remember to share that on social media and around the neighborhoods to remind folks about wearing masks right now. Next, we'll turn it over to George Ashford, who will give us a youth council update. George?
Thank you. It's good to be back. In the past couple of months since my last update, youth council, we took a short break at the beginning of the shutdown to sort of see what was going to happen before we decided to move to Zoom meetings. And since then, we've been working with the Board of Elections on youth voting outreach. Two of the main things we plan to do in the near future are candidate interview with young people's questions once the candidates have been nominated. Like a video that we chair where they answer questions that we crowdsourced from young folks. And we also plan to work with the City Communications Department on a voter registration video, specifically aimed at young folks to make sure that they do get registered. We've also been discussing the youth jobs program with folks from the Rec Department since it was shut down because of COVID-19 with the goal of reimagining it to improve youth economic opportunity in the current environment. And we're still working on figuring out what that might look like. And that's something that we'll continue to think about throughout our last meeting and then throughout the summer to take up again next year. We've also been working a lot on recruitment. The deadline for applications for next year's council recently passed. I believe we have 12 applicants from all wards but one, so, which I believe is Ward four. So we do have enough for a full council, luckily. And we, I imagine that will continue, that the new council will continue to look for a member from Ward four throughout the beginning of their term. Hopefully, we can fill that position. And finally, we have written and approved two statements for the county council, supporting and asking to strengthen two bills regarding police violence. And we plan to continue to advocate for reforms that protect citizens from such violence, particularly at the county level. We've been working a little bit with the Silver Spring Justice Coalition, talking about how we can get involved in that battle. So I believe that's all. Yeah. Any questions?
Great. Anyone have any questions? Not seeing any. So George, is this your last time giving a report or do we get one more in September?
This is my last one.
Oh, all right. That's what I thought it might be. Well, thank you so much for serving on the youth council. And we appreciate it. And I hear rumors you're taking a gap year next year.
I am.
Hopefully, we will get to see you.
I'll be around.
Around. And please keep in contact and let us know what you're doing.
Absolutely. It's been an honor working with all you guys. And I learned a lot. It's sad that I'm done now, but it was definitely a great experience being chair of the youth council.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Now, next, we'll move on to public comments. We didn't have any public comments on voting items, so we'll move on to general public comments. Is Mr. Randy Gibson with us?
I'm on board here. Thank you.
Okay. You can, you have your three minutes. You can start whenever you're ready.
I'll start now. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Randy Gibson. I'm asking for your support in meaningful action on our climate change emergency, in particular, our public green spaces. I'm speaking on behalf of members of the Tacoma Park Mobilization Committee, Tacoma Alliance for Local Living Economy, otherwise known as TALI. My comments here seek to do two things, make an offer and present a challenge. The offer, the long-delayed but anticipated review of Tacoma Park's public space management plan will provide an overdue opportunity to address our climate change emergency through a long-term commitment to conservation, restoration, and education. Many residents, including members of TALI, are ready to support you in this effort. Updating the city's goals and strategies for the management of public green space must match up with, catch up with 21st century science to include promotion and protection of plant and animal biodiversity, sustainable water and land management, and enhanced carbon sequestration. One important strategy to do that is through demonstration and education. City green spaces can be reimagined as models of a sustainable urban environment. And in so doing, also guides residents to more sustainably utilize their own yards and balconies. Public green spaces need to be identified in all city wards to demonstrate sustainable urban habitat. The challenge I present is over the next, over the last six months, we have consulted with ward representatives, Kostic and Dibala. We've consulted with experts on environmental management and with dozens of Tacoma Park residents on one small but meaningful step in sustainable land management. I refer to proposed actions on the city-owned Dorothy's Woods, a portion of which is covered with mud, weeds, and degraded blacktop. We propose to restore the blacktop portion of Dorothy's Woods as a native plant demonstration plot, a model to other city green space. Improved water and management and other benefits are anticipated at the site. We're asking you to partner with TALI and 56 Tacoma Park residents and families who not only signed a petition in support of Dorothy's Woods habitat restoration, but offered to volunteer on the project. We hope you will support this small step taken together to address our climate emergency. In conclusion, I plan on sending to the city a more formal proposal by next council meeting, which will ask for your support and partnership without asking for additional funds. Our offer to support the public space management planning process remains open. Lastly, the climate emergency is real. And any delay in addressing it potentially puts our community's future in further jeopardy. I hope I can count, we can count on your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We look forward to receiving that proposal. Next, we have Colleen Cordis. And Ms. Cordis requested additional time for this evening. Is she with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Mayor Stewart, could you tell me when I have 30 seconds?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm speaking for Community Vision for Tacoma about a, an issue that involves structural racism in housing in Tacoma Park. And this involves the lax oversight of cell towers in multifamily housing and high-rise rental apartment buildings. Affordable multifamily housing in high-rise rental apartment buildings that are home primarily to people of color with modest or low incomes, often immigrants. The owners of some of these buildings have turned them into cell towers. It's difficult for tenants to raise concerns to be sure their health and safety is being protected, given their need not to jeopardize their affordable housing. They're especially vulnerable now during the pandemic. County permits have been approved year after year relying entirely on companies' own estimates from computer simulations of what the levels of radio frequency radiation on top of these buildings will be. Cell antennas accumulate with no one ever actually taking any onsite measurement, even on the rooftops, let alone inside these buildings. If a telecom carrier predicts rooftop levels will exceed FCC limits, no problem. All they have to do to be considered in compliance with FCC standards is to post warning signs in English only and put up so-called barriers. That could be a fence, a chain, a rope, or even just painted stripes on the rooftop. Actually, all the county requires them to do is to promise to do these things as the county never goes back to make sure they did or to check on actual levels of emission. In Tacoma Park, these sites include Park Ritchie, Hampshire Tower Apartments, Victory Tower, and at least in the past, according to the county's records, Edinburgh House and Garland Towers. We have been advocating for the city and the county to make sure Park Ritchie residents, because this was an example that was so obvious and so blatant that it's come to everyone's attention. But we've been advocating for them to be fully informed and for the city and county to work together to get an onsite independent audit of what are the emissions at Park Ritchie and an onsite health assessment, as well as to fully inform residents and engage residents in planning an onsite review and in planning corrective action if it's needed. This brought up concerns about an emissions report in a Verizon-related application back in November to replace nine of the 33 antennas atop Park Ritchie. The report predicted the change would result in small areas on the rooftops where the radiation would be about 26 times what the FCC limits are for the general public, which is five times the limits for train workers. So the city council wrote a letter of concern to the county tower committee. Darrell Braithwaite, who is on the tower, the county tower committee, asked for more vertical measurements of what would the emissions actually be on that top residential floor. And the application was tabled until this month. So last week, Karen Lovejoy and I for Community Vision for Tacoma attended that meeting on the phone. And when this application came up, the tower committee coordinator suddenly informed everybody that, oh, we, you know, by the way, if you, if you don't replace those antennas, the ones that are up there right now are emitting 11% more emissions than what we want to, than what the proposal is to replace them with. Hadn't been told that. They had let this be tabled for about eight months without anyone knowing that they were putting off, you know, action on something that could improve the situation. And secondly, basically, the staff, the head of the staff for the tower committee confirmed that there is no software to predict what are inside levels of RF emissions. Nonetheless, they accepted a report, revised report from Verizon that didn't mention that there is no such software. Used software called Roof Master, which is only to measure roofs than in the air, and predicted what the inside levels would be. And the highest they suggested would be 50% at the floor. They only measured at the floor. 30 seconds. Okay, so basically, when we found out it was going to be 11% higher if this does not, if these aren't approved. Then we said, could this be approved with the condition that there be an immediate onsite audit of what's the baseline? And then come back and see what the levels are when they're finished with it. No, that did not happen. The vote came up, total silence. No one wanted to move it.
Thank you, Ms. Cordis. That's five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. And I would ask that we could speak with the council about this in a later. Or Mayor Stewart, we would like to.
You know where to find me, Colleen. You can email me and I'm happy to meet with you to see what we can do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, our next, sorry, that keeps going off. Next is Chantel. Is she with us?
I thank you for expressing your concern on the issue, by the way.
Hi, this is Sean Paul. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much for having public comment. I just wanted to really actually raise questions. The first is, I noticed that on the July 15 and 22 agendas for the council, you have consideration of budget amendment number one. And I was interested to understand what direction the council has given to staff regarding revenue projections, taking into account the consequences of the budget issues that the county and state have been facing and potential lost revenues from businesses that have been impacted by coronavirus. So I would be interested to know what the council and residents will be able to see in terms of projections as you take up consideration of those budget items that were put on the reserve list in your budget considerations or deliberations. That's the first question. The second question is about the library. I didn't, couldn't tell whether or not you had sort of separate public input on the library. But I really just had a question. And looking at the designs, it appears that the plan would cover over some of the open garage to create a lounge. We all missed the plaza that we were promised that was meant to go over the entire open garage in the front of the community center. And I'm not quite sure why it didn't happen. I understand we ran out of money. And I just wonder if any thought has been given to whether and when we might actually create that plaza. And if that's considered to be part of this renovation, given that the design does include covering over at least a part of the open garage. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll try and answer some of those questions when we get to the library. And I'm sure Councilmember Kovar can follow up with you on some of the other ones. Now, do we have Ms. Mary Jane Machuie? Has she joined us?
She has joined us.
Great.
Okay. I'm unmuted. I guess you can't see me for some reason. Oh, well.
We can hear you, Mary Jane.
That's okay. You can see me. I just want to say, I heard a lot. I was watching Tacoma Channel 13 and Comcast, the city TV station. And there was a lot about fancy things, like all icing on the cake, about the little libraries and playdays. But what about the cake? It sort of reminds me of Marie Antoinette saying, give them cake or give them icing. What about the people like my son who will end up homeless at the rate he's going? My son and others were born in Tacoma Park. He is black. If you think Black Lives Matter, don't just put a sign in front of your house. Do something. Help my son and others like him. And also, I would like to say a plus for CIT Crisis Intervention Training. I understand at least half of the people in our police force have taken it. I recommend it at all. I recommend everyone see a PBS documentary called The Definition of Insanity, which is a documentary about the city of Miami, a judge in Miami who saw so many people who were homeless ending up in jail for a while for fairly minor things, then being kicked out and being homeless and then waggling back in jail. And he said, that's a definition of insanity, which it is. And he tried to instigate, one of the things they talked about was crisis intervention training. And he tried to get it instigated in Miami. And lo and behold, not only did it, with their less violence and police shootings of pedestrians, of less shootings of police, the police were safer also. So please, please keep this in mind. And also want to say, I've been thinking about Pat Loveless, and I'm sorry about his passing, and I miss him. I sometimes had a hard time having a two-way conversation with him. But he was a very brave man, and I miss him. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Machuie. Great. I think, just checking with the city clerk, those are all the public comments for this evening?
Yes, that's everyone.
All right. Thank you, everyone who joined us this evening. We'll now move on to our, to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Anybody? All right, Council McCostick.
Thank you. Sorry, I was waving my hand in real life because I couldn't find the electronic one. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you to Mr. Gibson and the residents who are working on the proposal related to Dorothy's Woods. I'm really looking forward to receiving your updated proposal and getting some more information on this. And I would ask the city manager if maybe we could get an update tonight or in the future in terms of the timing, when we can expect the public space or open space management plan to come back to us and to have some more information about the timeline on that. I know it was put on hold to an extent due to COVID. So I'm curious where that stands and what the next steps are on that. And I also, it reminds me as well that I've also heard from a couple of people related to invasives and gardening in the city in general. And there was an announcement recently in the Tacoma Insider calling for volunteer assistance in maintaining gardens due to the vegetation manager, management supervisor position not being filled at the moment and, and not having some of the temporary contract staff that normally works on gardening. So just want to encourage people, if you have some expertise in that area or even if you don't and you're interested in learning, there are some opportunities for that as well. I'm certainly not a gardener myself, but I do find it enjoyable. So I think that's a good opportunity to get involved and, and help out in your neighborhood. I wanted to give a quick report out on the Transportation Planning Board's Access for All Committee meeting, which we had yesterday. There, we had a really interesting discussion that I think relates a bit to Tacoma Park in the sense that we have staff members participating in the GARE, the Government Alliance for Racial Equity Training. And we heard from some other, another cohort from Charles County that is also participating in that in the training and exercises that they're doing. And their project is focused on transit. So we were talking about that as it relates to the Transportation Planning Board. And they're thinking through some really useful models in terms of doing outreach work and having interns go out, of course, this was slowed down by COVID a bit, but having interns go out and actually ride transit with people and talk with people about their needs and the challenges they have using transit and what sort of models would be useful for them in terms of improving their transit system there. So I was excited to hear what they're doing. And I think, I'm sure that our staff members are also talking with others in the cohort as well. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about our own staff's work through that in the future, too. And then finally, I just want to let people know that I'm having two virtual office hour times in July. Both of them are at 8:00 PM. One is on Thursday, July 16th, and the other is on Sunday, July 19th. And I sent out some links, the link and phone number for those, and we'll circulate that again. I hope people will be able to join me. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Dibala?
Try that again. Yes, thank you. So also, thanks to Randy for talking about the project. I look forward to seeing the proposal also. And I echo, I want to thank the folks who have already volunteered to join the invasives brigade that's been working at Dorothy's Woods. I understand there's a video in the works on what is an invasive vine and what isn't. And I'm looking forward to that. I also want to thank the staff for prompt attention to continuing issues at Ethan Allen Avenue Townhomes, both the Public Works and the Code Staff. Thanks for getting out. Both the Public Works and the Code Staff, thanks for getting out and addressing those concerns. I've been getting questions about city playgrounds and when they might open or not. And I'll let the city manager address that when she does her city comments. And two other things. There's a proposed, a proposal for 415 Ethan Allen Avenue has officially been filed. This has been discussed on and off for some time in the Forest Park neighborhood. It's a, it's a one behind the other, letting a lot to make a pipe stem lot in back and add a second home. And I only mention it to say that I appreciate the staff getting prompt answers from the county planning director. It will be referred to the county planning board. It will not be decided only by the county planning director. That kicks off a 90-day clock. So we can be looking at a potentially, a public hearing at the county level on that in late September. And thank you to staff for getting all that information so quickly. My last item is, I am having a series of issues at discussions in July. I had my first one last night on the library. The second one is the Sunday evening on trees and also on climate issues. This coming Tuesday, on the city election and on COVID issues generally, and the last one will be on policing. So if you want specifics, just get ahold of me. But I hope to see and hear you virtually. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Circe. We can't hear you yet. No, we still can't hear you.
I keep unmuting myself, but then someone mutes me back. I have like three mutes I have to hit in order to talk. So good evening, everyone. First, I just want to say, I hope everyone had a fantastic long weekend. I want to give a special thanks to Advanced Community Services for the wonderful food drive grab and go that happened on Friday. It was a wonderful opportunity for me to volunteer. And I will say, not only were the volunteers so pleasant to work with, but people who were in line to pick up, to pick up food were also just so pleasant. So it made the experience that much more enjoyable. So I just want to thank everyone who organized that event. Also, just a quick reminder about Crossroads Farmer's Market. It's on Wednesdays. It's still happening. And please go early. I can't stress that enough. Go early. Especially if you need something specific. So definitely want to remind people to come out on Wednesdays to the farmer's market. It's a great opportunity to get fresh fruits and vegetables in an open air environment. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Great. All right. I'm not seeing, Councilmember Kovar.
A few things I just wanted to mention. One, and maybe this is something that the city manager could check with the, with the police and I'll follow up with them separately. But there was an incident recently where there was a shooting, and the person did not die fortunately in the area behind Darwin Avenue, over in the park with the pavilion over there. It's behind Piney Branch Elementary, near the skate park. And I've certainly heard from residents over the years that gatherings often happen there. And I think people don't really want to call the police on a regular basis. But the sense is that there's a lot of activity there that sometimes results in criminal acts taking place. And the challenge is that since that area is technically under the control of the county parks police instead of our own city police, not to say that our police can't respond to incidents there in the heat of the action. But I think because of the different forces technically responsible for it, sometimes the patrols are not as significant as they could be. And so I think it would be helpful for people who live in that area to see if we can, in some fashion, through the agreements that we already have with Montgomery County to strengthen what's happening there or give us some control over patrol in the area, something along those lines. So I'd be interested in hearing back from staff about that. And it also did happen that subsequent to this particular event, the K-9 staff was used both by the county and by the city. And I think as part of our reimagining of the police force going forward, and we certainly talked about the need to strengthen our policy on not having DOD surplus equipment and looking at the emergency response team. And I think the K-9 should be part of that review also. I imagine there's some value to it, but maybe we can get what we need using the county staff. So I think that's something I'd like to have us look at going forward. A couple of other things, on July 4th, I was fortunate to be able to be part of a really great event that was organized by some neighbors who live over in the Triangle Park area where Baltimore and Albany Avenue has come together. And several residents from over there organized a group, group reading of, a bridged version of Frederick Douglass's, you know, speech from Independence Day in 1852. And it was a hot day, and I think we had about, I guess, 75 people watching. And we socially distanced and several of us took turns reading. And it was a great way to spend the fourth. And, you know, it wasn't a celebration. It was a more sober kind of event, but I thought appropriate for the day. And I was really pleased that several neighbors stepped up and organized that. And then the last thing I just want to mention, I did have last night a online virtual discussion for Ward 1 people. We had 10 or 15 people. They're probably closer to 15. A lot of great things discussed, and so I appreciate folks taking the time to participate. I know there's a lot of other things going on, so it's not that easy to do it. And I will have more events coming up in July along those lines. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Kovar. Any other council comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. I just have a couple of announcements. Wednesday seems like CAG, Council of Governments Day, because we also, in addition to the Transportation Planning Board, we had our CAG board meeting today. And I will say that we, that today we focused on racial equity. And the CAG board did pass a resolution committing CAG to working on racial equity. And I'll just say that I was happy to be able to ask for some amendments that were very similar to the resolution that we have in the city that Councilmember Smith put forward a couple of years ago. So I was easily pulled that up and was able to strengthen what the CAG board did today. So I was glad to be able to do that. And again, thank you to Councilmember Smith and to our whole council for all the work they've been doing on racial equity over the years. And we did get a nice shout out from Councilwoman Nancy Navarro when she presented on Montgomery County. And she did say that Tacoma Park really had led the way, working on the racial equity work. So the other thing is, we are having some success on getting rid of those down wires on utility poles. I was so happy to walk by RNS Automotive and actually be able to walk down the street. We still have a couple of issues in the city. And so if you, if you want to continue to send me the pole numbers and the locations, we'll continue to try and get to take care of all those. But I have been walking around and noticing a number of them have been taken care of. I want to add to Councilwoman Circe's, thanks to Abington Services for the grab and go. It was a really terrific event Friday night. It was hot. I was glad to be there with Delegate Charcutian and Councilmember Siemens and his wife Joyce. But boy, that shower felt so good when I got home that night. And I do appreciate that as a council, many of us have been out there volunteering and really seeing the need firsthand. Because the need is very great. And as Councilwoman Circe said, the volunteers are terrific, the people who are picking up the food, you know, are so thankful for it. So. And I have one question for our city manager. I know we had an announcement that our Neighborhood Services team is going to start coming out again and doing some of their work. I did get questions regarding the parking permits and whether or not people could mail in renewals versus coming in person. So I think there are still some folks who would prefer not to do things in person. And so if we could follow up on that, that would be great. And that's all I have. So I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. And I don't have the answer on the, on the parking permits per se, but we're, we've been trying to be as flexible as possible. Calling, writing, mailing, whatever. We don't want people to feel like they need to come into the building, and so we're working around that. But I'll try to get some good language out to you so you can share it with, with the residents. A couple of different things. Last week, I mentioned very briefly the Healthy Business Initiative that our staff has put into place. Today, I can also share with my, in my city manager comments, the link to the, to the program and to the application. This is a variety of ways for us to help our small businesses deal with the reopening and the safety issues of serving our residents. So it has to do with signage to encourage mask wearing and distancing. It has cleaning procedures and it has additional grant programs. So we have a variety of things that complement what the county and other agencies have and do, but really have been talked through with our business owners to make sure that it's something that's useful. We will start getting out, I think tomorrow, the information on the next pop-up COVID-19 testing. I believe it will be Thursday, July 16th, at the Rex Center in the afternoon. I think it's 3:00 to 7:00. But we'll get out the information. You must have an appointment. I have to register in advance for that, so we will get that information out. One of the things that I appreciated is that Montgomery County Health and Human Services staff have been working with us to modify things to take suggestions from the last time and make some improvements. I have also in my city manager comments, the first month's report on the Laurel Avenue closure. Part of the direction of the resolution to allow for the creation of the Tacoma Park Streetery, Lower Avenue Streetery, was to have kind of a monthly check-in on that and also a report on the, on the survey that people's comments were submitted. And we've received 54 responses to that survey so far on the city website. About 80% of the respondents are Tacoma Park residents. 85% indicated they had visited Laurel Avenue since the closure, and 87% said they had actually walked there at least one time. One of the questions was, have you observed issues as a result of Laurel Avenue's closure? About 56% said they observed no issues. And the other residents stating that they observed driver confusion, people not following physical distancing guidelines. Also, early on, there were comments about not enough additional seating, and that's now been corrected with the seating and tables that have been added to that area. They were asked, have you observed any impacts of the Laurel Avenue closure on adjacent streets? About 67% said they observed no issues, and some saying that they observed driver confusion or speeding cars. And when asked for additional comments, about 15% of the respondents added that they'd like to see both sides of Laurel Avenue closed. 11% stated that they'd like to see the change of the one side made permanently. And so we have the information on that. I think one of the things that I heard is that some people don't work well with the kind, with this kind of survey. They want a different way of sharing information. So we're going to continue to talking, be talking with people and, and looking to continue to modify and see what seems to be working well. So I just, that's the first month check-in. But I think there's more for us to investigate and hear from.
Could I ask a question about that? Thank you for the information. I appreciate it. One of the things that struck me from what you said is that if there are questions about driver uncertainty or safety for pedestrians who are there, have we done anything to increase the monitoring by staff potentially during certain times of day? When, I know it's hard to predict when traffic will be heavier now than it, it's harder now than it used to be because we don't quite know what the heavy traffic periods are like during the pandemic. But it sounds like if there's safety concerns or driver uncertainty, that having staff there or police there at times to help direct things might be beneficial. Is that something that?
Yes, we've actually had staff out there and changed some of the signage because of that. So I think, I think there's that. You know, it, it's one of these things where even, one time when I was driving up Eastern Avenue, and so I was coming kind of from the New Hampshire Avenue side of Eastern Avenue. It is interesting that you do feel like you want to turn on the wrong way part of that street. And so part of it, I think, you know, we did put up additional signs, but it may need something more, more substantial there to, to make it. And that's, you know, part of what we did was not do much that was permanent because we were, it was a trial, but it may be something that we want to do something a little bit substantial.
I'm thinking about how, and this is not an issue now, but it could be in a couple of months because I know when it starts to get darker, there are often greater numbers of pedestrian, pedestrians being hit by cars and so on. And we want to make sure that people really know what the appropriate traffic patterns are there before we get into, and have them properly signed, before we get into the time period when there's a greater amount of driving time when it's dark, let's put it that way.
That's right. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor it and see what else we can do. And I, and I appreciate those comments. You know, I, this is all an experiment. So we're working on it and seeing how to, how to improve it and make sure that it's safe. I wanted to-
Sorry, can I also just ask a quick question on that? First of all, thank you very much for the update. I think that's, it's really helpful to hear what kind of feedback you're getting on the survey. And I've also been hearing from people and passing along people's comments and questions and concerns. And I've appreciated the work that staff have been doing to try to address some of the issues that people have flagged. Just a quick question. I was wondering, do you know if the change has been registered in like Google Maps and Waze and the online services?
You know, I was thinking about that. I'm not sure that they're on all of them yet. And we'll check.
Okay, that would be great. And, and I think the other thing is just, if we can continue to get updates on survey responses and how things are going and just have ongoing coordination with the Neighborhood Association there in Waco, that would be great.
Would love that, yes. I used Waze today and it did show up, actually. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Couple, for that, I've got a couple more points. I'm sorry, there was the question about what's, when would city playgrounds open? And I don't have a definite date yet. We are getting signage in two languages to put out at the city playgrounds. I know Park and Planning has already opened a number of its playgrounds. This is a very tough area because in one sense, playing outside is, is healthy and it's an important, and it's sometimes better than being in a crowded place inside. So, so I appreciate that very much. We also have to really make sure that the messaging is clear about not too many people and that, you know, and the actual equipment could be unsafe. And so people need to wash their hands and wear masks and that kind of thing. There are some interesting kind of directives from the CDC and from some medical, different kind of state medical offices in different places that rank different activities. And being in a playground is not as unsafe as some other outdoor activities like playing basketball. So we really have a tough area here about how to, what things to keep, what things to open, what things to keep closed. At this moment, I want to do as the, as Montgomery County is doing, is just waiting a little bit on the numbers after the Fourth of July weekend. And so I, I think that between having the signage and just seeing how these trends go, it's likely that we'll open the city playgrounds pretty soon. But, but I do want to hear a little bit more information before I make that call. The and I just want to note also, one of the public comments had a question about budget amendment and budget projections. There will be additional information that we will share with the council when the budget discussion comes before you. The other thing that I'm really excited about is that our finance director and deputy city manager have been working really hard on improvements or additional information in the adopted budget to show answers to a lot of the kinds of questions or ways of looking at things that were raised during the budget process. And so this will be very helpful. It's it's already very exciting to me. So that information will come out. I think that will provide a lot of information to the people who had many questions. It also gives us some good formats for use the next for the next proposed budget. And so I'm really pleased with the work that's being done to try to put us into a situation where we have the answers up front and 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 can help people do their own analysis of the projected or adopted budgets. I think that's it.
Great, all right. We'll move on now to our voting session. We have one voting item this evening. That's a resolution reappointing Kathleen O'Toole as our Tacoma Park poet laureate. And Ms. O'Toole is with us today. And I'll just say that by unanimous vote on its meeting on June 16th, the Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Commission approved the request for the reappointment of our Tacoma Park poet laureate Kathleen O'Toole. This will be her second term, and it dates from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2022. The poet laureate position was established in 2005, and it honors the achievements of a local poet who provides a library leadership in the literary leadership in the community. So I know Mrs. O'Toole is Ms. O'Toole is with us. If you wanted to say a few words before we pass the resolution reappointing you.
Sure, thank you very much. I I only want to say that in my conversations with Brendan and via him, the Arts and Humanities Commission, my willingness to extend my term had a lot to do with the fact that between Brendan, myself, and last year's poetry, Third Thursday Poetry Selection Committee, we've really been making some important efforts to both widen our audience and broaden the range of poetic voices that we're featuring in our Third Thursday series and have even done a couple of special events like last year's Enquintro Poetico. And the COVID break enforced has kind of slowed those efforts a bit. And so going back and forth with Brendan, I expressed my willingness to extend my term and therefore not create a lot of extra work for the Arts and Humanities Commission and so that we could continue that work for another couple of years. And I'm happy to do that. So thank you for considering my reappointment.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being willing to do that. We very much appreciate it, especially at this time. Now, I'll ask the council if someone would please move the resolution. Councilmember Siemens and moved Councilwoman Dibala second. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, well, congratulations. You have your second term as our poet laureate. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, now we will move on to our work sessions this evening. The first two we have up is the Charter Amendment to accommodate by mail voting and Election Code revisions to accommodate vote by mail. And so I know we are now joined by our city attorney and we have our city clerk, who I think will speak to this. So I think I'm turning it over to our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor. The you have before you a charter resolution that is designed to expand certain time periods in order to allow the mail in ballot voting to take place. One of the thing, the main practical considerations that is driving these changes is the amount of time that will take the Board of Elections to process an increased number of mail in ballots. The reasons for having the option to move to an election that is predominantly mail in ballot are obvious. And obviously, the the state has been struggling with that issue, as have been others. But the Charter Amendment that you have before you is designed to allow that process to take place, which will become more clear as you see the Election Code provisions that will be put in front of you in the near future. So specifically, the changes in the Charter would be Sections 301 and 305, which essentially address the same thing, which changed the time when the council is seated. The new council is seated after the election. Section 605 changes the registration process for write in candidates. And Section 613 changes the time for the certification of the election from forty eight hours after Election Day until for additional time to allow that certification to take place, which would be the second Wednesday after the election. And again, the code changes, which I know you don't have in front of you, but really that's driving some of these considerations. The code changes will be designed are designed to allow for a vote by mail election that is predominantly vote by mail. There's still have to be limited in person voting for certain circumstances, limited absentee ballot voting and other considerations. But the new mail in ballot provisions would also provide for in a what I'll refer to as a traditional election for these for the purposes of this conversation, individuals to elect to participate by mail in ballot only. This code section will be added as a new chapter to Title V. And you'll see when you get that that there are other minor changes that are made for consistency throughout Title V. But the the resolution had to be done first in order to meet all the various timelines that we have to make meet with respect to a resolution. And given the timeframe that we're dealing with, we wanted to get that in front of you as quickly as possible. Now, defer to the mayor and the city clerk as to any additional context that needs to be provided.
Ms. Carpenter, do you have anything to add? Ms. Carpenter, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Thank you for that. So so I would mention that the governor has directed the State Board of Elections to hold an in person election, to have every precinct open and every early voting center open. And the state will be sending every voter an absentee ballot application. And that doesn't really direct what we do in our election. I the direction will still be vote by mail. But I think it's important to recognize that the governor came out with his decision, which is very disappointing. So the Board of Elections will be meeting tomorrow night, and we have a lot to discuss, and we look forward to hearing your questions tonight.
Great. Well, Ms. Carpenter, I have one question based on what you just said. If there are early voting sites set up and other things, but we but we move to vote by mail, then people wouldn't vote. We wouldn't have people voting in our election for early voting. Is that what we're looking at right now?
That is what we're looking at. I'm anxious to have our board meeting and and to discuss this a little bit further. Because we would, even with vote by mail, we want to have some in person presence for people who don't get a ballot, who are confused, who need a ballot marking device, who aren't registered. And I'm wondering if we can do some minimal staffing at the Silver Springs Civic Building during early voting to assist voters who need to do that. But I just don't have the answers yet.
Okay.
But that our original plan was to have a presence at early voting. And so now it looks like we might want to reopen that issue just so that we don't have everyone coming on Election Day at the last minute.
Great, thank you. And I just had a couple of questions. I know this could be for the city attorney or the or the city clerk and or it could be something that the board wants to discuss tomorrow night. We talked about, I think it's in the Charter changes, moving when the new council will be sworn in. And it gets a little confusing about like if it's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, then it moves to the first Monday. Is there any reason why we wouldn't just say the first Monday after it was the election results were certified to make it easier for people instead of worrying about Thanksgiving? And I don't know if the board discussed this or not.
Mayor, I'll just say that that my intention was to try and keep it on a regular meeting night. And and so that was why we did the second Wednesday. Or the yeah, correct. So or the Wednesday after that, excuse me. But it can be whatever day you want it to be, provided the only other consideration I think would be just to allow staff to adjust after the election is certified on the second Wednesday. So I have no issues with that. To me, it's a it's a logistical question for the for the mayor and council, the city clerk and staff.
Great. And so maybe if the city clerk, if the, you know, I would think I would defer really to the recommendation by the Board of Elections and the city staff on what would be easier to administer on that. And then before I turn over to my colleagues, I did have one other question. Because we did get late in the day, and I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at the Election Code revisions. And I just looked at it quickly. But what if someone, I know it says if 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 a ballot is ruined or somebody need requests another one, then they have to sign an affidavit and they can get another ballot. But what if someone never says they never received the first ballot? Is that covered in what we have right now?
Take a look at the specific language, Mayor, but certainly that would be, to me, the intent. And even if, you know, if we're going to have limited in person voting, which we would have to have, they could always show up and get a provisional ballot, and it can be dealt with that way. But if if that language needs to be more specific, we'll make it that way.
Okay. And again, I just looked at it really quickly, so I may have missed it. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, thank you. So just a couple of questions backing up for a minute to the state decision today. I want to make sure I've got this straight. So the city is planning to mail actual ballots to everybody. The state is planning to mail applications for absentee ballots, and people would still have to then apply to get a ballot. And then the ballot gets mailed to them, and then they mail it back. It's a
Correct.
step process, whereas we're intending to just mail the ballots. Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Then on the on the on the proposed changes, just do me a favor and say again how much time you and the commit election board believe you need to count all the absent, excuse me, all of the mail in ballots that you had received. Clearly, you can't do them the night of the election, because there's a certain amount of time. You want to allow for all the mail in ballots to show up. And then do you think you could do all of that in one night, or you count on a couple of nights? What's your timeframe in terms of actually counting the vote?
So the our the board's recommendation is to 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 certify the election, the the Wednesday, the second Wednesday after the election. That doesn't necessarily mean that results won't be available before then, but crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is will take additional time, and it will take time to to canvas all the mail in ballots, to open them, review them. It it just takes time, and we don't have a good sense of of how many we're looking at. But if we have a large number of, we want to be sure it's not rushed. You you want to have the correct results when they're certified.
Yes, of course. And so that is effectively eight days. If the election's on a Tuesday, you're allowing eight days, which, if anything, seems to me. I I take your recommendation, but I would think that that would be the minimum. That's why I'm asking.
We will talk about it again tomorrow night. But Arthur David Olson did some calculations and he
There you go.
He did participate in the county's canvas for the primary and is somewhat familiar with how long it might take. And the thought was that by the Wednesday afterwards, it could be accomplished.
Okay.
Look at that again.
Thank you. I'm fine with your recommendation. I just wanted to understand it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kovar.
There we go. Thank you for the information. So just on the dates, the same thing that my colleague was talking about, two questions. One is, I think, based on what we said earlier, that what's being contemplated is that any ballot that was postmarked as of the Election Day would be accepted. And so do we know on average in other places that have done this, how long that generally takes for those to come trickling in? Is it or do you set a certain day after which, like say, for example, a ballot comes in two weeks later, it just for whatever reason took a long time, but it happened to have been, in fact, postmarked on Election Day. Does it count? Do you ever not count them when they come in?
So there does, there has to be an endpoint. And the preliminary recommendation is to accept post ballots post they're come in the mail and are postmarked on or before Election Day to accept them until the the mail on Friday, if they're received on Friday in the mail. It can't be delivered by hand on Friday. But if they're received in the mail by the Friday after election, it really only allows a few additional days. We didn't want to delay it so long that we couldn't get a reasonable get results in a reasonable time.
Right. And so I guess I would say on the other point that my colleague just mentioned, I do worry a little bit about the delay of up to, I suppose it would be about eight days, right? And I gather there may be a distinction between counting them and having results and then when it's ultimately certified. And so, you know, having it wait more than a week these days with all the sort of conspiratorial things that are out there just makes me a little nervous. And I know you're not happy that you're recommending that amount of time, I would say to the city clerk. But I don't know if it's possible to, you know, figure out the total amount of votes for that have come in in a given, you know, for the city or for a given ward or and determine at least give some sort of preliminary answer sooner than that, because that's a long time to wait. It doesn't bother me that much that we wait another week or so, the new council to come in, because then presumably, you know, they'll that'll work itself out on the other end. But eight days does seem like a long time.
I I can't make any promises, but I think we'll have results sooner than that. But this is new territory for us, and I I don't know for sure that we will. I can assure you that the review of ballots and the counting will be a transparent process that to the extent that we can, we will certainly, it will be a process that can happen in public view so that people could watch it. We will try to have video available as the county did so that people could actually watch it going on. So nothing is happening in secret behind closed doors. It will be a transparent process.
And can they only start being opened once the polls close?
No, with with our, with the changes to the code, the the plan is to start opening and processing ballots shortly after they start to come in. So we're not waiting, we're not counting anything until after the polls close. But but we will start
Stacking them up and getting them ready and
Processing them, yes, and scanning them, but not tabulating them. So so we're not waiting until the end.
But so they are scanned as opposed to being hand counted. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, just thank you to the Board of Elections, City Clerk and the City Attorney for working on these issues and we'll come back to this again next week. And just as a reminder for folks, next Wednesday, we do have the public hearing on the charter change. And the charter changes are up on the city website, so people can take a look at that. So next now we'll move on to our work session on the library. And I know we are joined by the architect Greg Lukemeyer. Am I, am I turning it over first to Greg or this city manager?
I think to, I think to the deputy city manager, she's going to help run this this item.
Yep, I'll start things off. I'm going to share my screen quickly with everyone. Everyone see that all right? All right, excellent. So good evening. As everyone may recall, back in April, council voted to continue to work with Lukemeyer Architects on arriving at a final design and a final cost estimate for a new library before deciding whether or not to move forward with the library project. So the purpose of our presentation this evening is to take one step closer towards the final design. We have a plan for the interior, but we need to provide Mr. Lukemeyer with more guidance, more specific guidance on what we want the exterior to look like. And he has three options for us that we're going to compare and contrast this evening. So to help council in your decision, we circulated a public survey, pretty widely circulated over the past two weeks. And I'd like to thank the youth council and the friends of the library for helping us get the word out as well as our communications director. And we had 577 responses. So thank you to everyone who filled out the survey. As you can see from the results, the winning design was option three, which we'll call the angled roof for entry and lounge design, and it was followed closely by option two. I'm sorry, followed closely by option one, the swooped roof and layered horizontal sun shades design. And option two fell back a bit, but but a pretty good lead or tie between option one and three. And of the 577 respondents, 172 left written comments and those comments were shared with council this evening. And we also received some emailed comments directly. And a lot of those centered around two main themes. So a lot of commenters emphasized cost effectiveness in the midst of the pandemic and economic recession. So we're actually going to start our presentation this evening, talking about cost to address that concern. And a lot of those comments focused on energy costs and maintenance costs over time. So Mr. Lukemeyer has some new slides about that. And you can see from my table below that there are about 57 comments on that, written comments on that. And then architectural style was really the biggest area. So we had 114 comments, both pro and con on the different architectural elements. So for instance, some commenters felt that the designs looked like they would let in too much light. Others said, you know, not enough. Some said that the entrance looked more welcoming. Others said they wish the entrance was on Philadelphia Avenue. We had some people say the design looked too angular. Others said, you know, the angles look great. They look like a book opening on the roof. And then some people love that we are keeping the mosaic. So a variety of comments. So I think in our presentation this evening, we'll we'll unpack a lot of those and look at, we always have the option of blending elements between the three options. We don't have to adopt an option in whole. And Mr. Lukemeyer is going to talk a little bit about how we arrived at this, at a more modern design and how it ties in with the community center. So if we start with cost, they're relatively close, but option one is the most expensive option, followed by option three. And the city manager went into more detail on this in her March presentation to the council. So I'm going to, we're going to move on to the new recurring costs information for energy costs that Mr. Lukemeyer has this evening. So Mr. Lukemeyer?
Okay. Let me. Can you hear me first of all?
Yes.
Okay, great. What you're going to see this evening is not significantly different than what I showed you in February, but we had a long discussion about the appearance and what people liked, what people didn't like. You know, there's a saying that if you ask five people or three architects what they like, you're going to get seven opinions. And so we've got a lot of different opinions, both pro and con, and that's all good. But I wanted to address the energy issue first because I don't really think it ought to be a, the tail that wags the dog in this case. Energy efficiency is absolutely critical to design a building that's environmentally friendly, that doesn't use a lot of power, doesn't take a lot of raw materials to construct. That is in effect, a healthy building is a LEED certified building. And so energy efficiency is is not something that is only associated with the HVAC system. And I think that a lot of comments that we receive led me to believe that most people think that you pick the least, the most efficient HVAC system and you get the most efficient building or the least expensive building to run. So let's just start with HVAC systems there. And there seems to be a conventional wisdom that geothermal is the least expensive system. It's, what I should say is the most energy efficient system. Another system that we investigated was called the VRF, a variable refrigerant flow system, which in effect are a whole series of little cassettes that you put in individual rooms, which allow a room adjacent to another room, one to have cooling, one to have heating. And we use that a lot in particularly school renovations where each room can have its own environment. Obviously, the library, which is a great big open space is not going to have the requirement that adjacent rooms are going to have individual needs. And the third is called a variable air volume or a VAV system, which is probably in 90% of the office buildings in the Washington DC area. I will tell you that we have used both variable refrigerant flow systems in libraries. Two recent ones in Prince William County in Virginia, both of which are approximately 21,000 square feet. So they're not significantly different size to the library we're talking about here, which is about 19,000 square feet. The vast majority of the libraries that we have designed use a VAV system. We have used geothermal, particularly in several schools in Montgomery County. And we have found over the years that a geothermal system really has a good payback when a building is pretty large. So if you look at the relative efficiencies of the three systems, the most efficient is geothermal. And I'm going to get into a little bit more actual numbers. I'm not going to make up numbers. The next is a VRF and the third is a VAV. From a standpoint of first cost, the most expensive system that you can use or install as a geothermal system, partly because you are drilling a whole series of wells, sometimes 200 feet into the ground and you have a drain. In effect, you have a drain field and you're using the earth's constant temperature to, and you run liquid through those wells and you in effect take out or put in cooling into the into the the fluids that go in this. And then you use a fairly traditional pumping system to pump it through the building. The VRF system, as I said, is a system that's basically uses all these cassettes and you pump hot and cold water to each one of these little units that can be on a wall or that they can be above a ceiling. And they each have a condenser or you can gang a number of these into a condenser. Many of you have seen these kinds of units, like a Mitsubishi unit that you see that when somebody's trying to add supplemental cooling or heating to a room. And the third is a VAV system, in which case you are basically pumping air into a box and the box modulates how much ventilation cold air that you need. In a VRF system, you have to have a totally separate ventilation air system as you do with geothermal. From an operational cost in terms of the highest cost operate to the lowest, interestingly enough, geothermal is the most expensive, followed by VRF, followed by VAV. And that's really more of a life cycle cost. Another component of energy efficiency is power. A huge proportion of the heat generated in a building is lighting and has been traditionally over the years. The advent of the use of LED lighting has cut down that heat dramatically. And now the energy codes are requiring us to use occupancy sensors so that when you leave a room, the lights go off. You probably all experienced sitting, going into a restroom or something, all of a sudden the lights go off if you're not moving. But the new energy code requires us to do this in individual rooms. The next thing that has to do with energy efficiency is the amount of glass in a wall, in an exterior wall. Obviously, no buildings with the exception of computer farms have no windows. So all all buildings have a certain amount of windows. 30, 40 years ago, we were told we could have no more than about 20% glass. That lasted through the 70s and the early 80s. Most buildings today have anywhere from probably 30, 40, 50% to 100% glass. And of course, if you're trying to follow LEED standards, obviously, natural light and views are very important in a healthy building. So one of the issues is what's a reasonable proportion of solid wall to glass? Today's glass can be incredibly efficient. They don't match that of a solid wall with, you know, three inches of insulation. But you're not going to have, as I said before, a building with no windows at all. So the use of glass is not a huge determinant to energy efficiency. And the third, and perhaps one of the most important aspects of energy efficiency is the quality of the exterior envelope, meaning the construction of walls and roofs. That has to do with not only the amount of insulation, but the use of air and vapor barriers in those components to make a building incredibly tight so that you don't have a lot of air leakage going in or out. Interestingly enough, today's buildings are incredibly tight. And there are those who say, well, they're not as healthy because of that, because they don't breathe as well and they are they are, they depend on the mechanical system to create the clean ventilation air. So those are the the components of energy efficiency. So a lot of people mentioned, oh, my gosh, we can't have all that glass because it's not energy efficient. Or we have to use a geothermal system because here in Tacoma Park, we care about energy efficiency and making sure that buildings use as little energy as possible. So go to the next one, please. Here are three figures that our engineers have provided for me. So I said the geothermal is the most energy efficient, but has the highest upfront cost that about the construction for a geothermal system with all the components is about $80 a square foot for a building. It also has highest maintenance costs because it has a whole lot of parts to gen, to distribute those liquids. And but the annual energy costs is a lowest at about a buck and a quarter a year. So if you look at the initial cost for building in 19,000 square feet, yearly energy cost and the yearly maintenance cost. You go down to the VRF system, which is slightly less efficient. It's a less expensive system. It uses, it's, it's it's about 40% less from maintenance cost and it's, but it's energy cost for the year is more than a geothermal system. So you could say you could save maybe, I'm going to call it $10,000, $10,000 a year in a yearly maintenance cost and about three, maybe $4,000 in energy costs, your, your, your your bill. A VAV system, you get nervous, you say, my gosh, it's 30% less efficient compared to geothermal. It has, the cost to install it is about a half. It's the easiest and least expensive to maintain. And the energy cost is the highest of $175 square foot. So you can see that it costs about half as much to put in as geothermal. Its yearly energy cost is about $10,000 per year more. Yearly maintenance cost is the least expensive. So depending upon what one sense of values is, one can say, you know, is, let's go ahead and put in a geothermal system just because we want to put a geothermal system in. It'll, you know, increases the first cost by about three quarters of a million dollars. And based on what you're going to save in energy costs, it's going to take 75 years to pay back. So these are order of magnitudes based on history of systems and based on 19,000 square foot building. So if you look at the energy costs of the lowest at almost 24,000 to the highest of 33,000, we're not talking about a delta that's so significant that I might pick one system over another. And say, we must use that system. All three systems can be used in a library. I would mention one other thing that the geothermal system will require a fairly large mechanical room in the building. Right now, we have not accommodated for any square footage for a mechanical room. And so if in fact that is chosen, then library space will have to be sacrificed for additional space or mechanical space. A VRF system, excuse me, is going to require, I'll call it a condenser farm, just like you have on the outside of your house, for your air conditioning system. There could be anywhere from 20 to 30 different little condensers. They would probably have to be on the roof because there really are no, is no space to put on grade and around the library. The VAV system that we're proposing is a self-contained rooftop unit. So it simply sits on the roof. And you currently have a unit up on the roof now, so it would take the place of the one that you have now. So this is more for information only. You don't need to make any decisions at this point. This can follow. We can have more discussions about this in the future. I simply want to point out that as you I simply want to point out that as you discuss and look at exterior solutions, I would not say that energy is a huge determinant of a choice. Okay, so let's go to the next. I generated a quick list after telephone conversation with Ellen and Jessica. And we generated a quick list because the last time we presented a series of options, I have a feeling there were too many graphics and people probably lost track of which is which and what, what really were even the differences. So some of the issues that you might focus on as we review these is, you know, the amount of mullions, the lines that go through the glass, whatever glass there is. How much solid masonry is really appropriate and do you think should be in the library? From all the way to none, or we have, we all have, we have some and all the options, but is that enough? There's an issue for the roof overhang, what we call euphemistically the swoopy roof. The entrance, what would be the most welcoming entrance? And there's a, there's a reason to talk about that. The transition between the community center and the entry. We got a lot of comments about, does the library tie into the existing? One person called it the Queen Anne style community center. However, the community center has four different sides and each one looks a little bit different. And so we'd like to get your input into how important tying into the aesthetic of the community center is and what does that mean? We'll continue and we'll get back to that. The issue of the mosaic. There's an issue of stormwater management. When you built the community center, you have huge underground tanks. In addition to utilities between Philadelphia Avenue and the library. And then you have these tremendous tanks that are in the parking, the depressed parking area. So the civil engineers have evaluated this from not only the standpoint of this, the flood, but stormwater management. There seem to be two options. We can provide a vegetated roof and that requires a thickness of plant material. Or we can build some bio retention areas in the front of the building and I'll show you what that would look like. If in fact you have a landscaped roof, it's very difficult then to use photovoltaics because the photovoltaics hide the green roof and the rainwater really doesn't get down to them. So let's go to the next one. These are just some of the things to keep in your mind. You know what the existing library looks like. It is the L shape with the the lobby with the computer rooms, the senior room. Let's go to the next one. And the concept of the latest, and one of the other things that people talked about in the comments were how does this connect to the existing building? You all know that the existing entrance to the community center is up. I don't have a, I can't use my cursor, but perhaps Jessica.
Yeah, I can try to help.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I can try to help. I can try.
Okay, if you could point to where the entrance to the community center is above. It's the top of the slide.
Oh, like the main entrance?
No, you're in the wrong side.
All right, well.
Anyway, but the corridor between the, the blue area going north outside the Mac lab between the seniors is the connection to the current location of the reception desk. And so it does tie in this room that's the top of the three green rooms is your existing conference room. And of course, we're adding the Mac lab and the lounge, which yes, does span that depressed parking. So this is the existing, the proposed building. The library is approximately 19,000 square feet in this plan. You currently have about 9,400 square feet. And then that does not include the staff area, the seniors, the Mac lab or the lounge. The program that was developed, gosh, three years ago, called for a library that needed to be between around 16, 15, 16,000 square feet and 20,000 square feet. The direction given was, well, what's the largest we could keep, develop and keep the existing trees and but what's about the largest footprint? So what you're looking at is about the largest footprint. Is it a little bit larger than you perhaps have to have? Yes. So there's a delta here of a couple of thousand square feet that was illustrated, simply to say, this is the, probably the maximum building that you could put on this site. And so we talked a little bit in our last meeting about, could you reduce it a little bit? And the answer was yes, you could reduce it a little bit. Does that make a huge difference? That's in terms of cost, it does make some difference. But that's simply something else. That's another ball that can be in the air. So let's go to the next. So here is the library and this is a civilian drawing and these two little, the peanut shape, the amoeba shape are the bio retention areas that would be located to take care of all the stormwater management that remains to be dealt with. The additional space, which includes filling in the courtyard and the area that, the lounge that's over the depressed parking and the front of the library adds about 6,000 square feet of impervious material that we have to deal with. And so that's what these two little bio retentions are for. They would be planted. They would be a swale that would be depressed about two feet. And then they would be planted with plant material and special soil so that the water would drain. The option would be to do some sort of a vegetated roof, but as you can see, there really is no other site. And because WSSC has this pipe going through, I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated because I can't point, but anyway, there's a right of, there's a effective right of way for some utilities. So we can't, we can't hinge upon that right outside of Philadelphia. So that's simply another piece of information. So let's go to the next. So it's important to see what you see today in the library. This is what the library kind of looks like. I have stitched two photographs together. I think it's important to look at this. You can't see into it. You don't know what it is. It's probably 70% solid. There is high windows. And so when you begin to look at some of the differences that proposed, you can see, you'll be able to remember this. The lower photograph is what you see from the parking lot. And so once again, there really is no entrance to the parking lot. And if you remember, one of the reasons why the entrance is from the parking lot is number one, we've tried to raise the entrance as much as possible and the farther we move away from Philadelphia, the more we can get out of the flood plain. And as you know, we have to raise the floor of the library. So that's one of the reasons. The other is for those who park, it's a logical place to go from your car to a building. And for those who are walking, we hope to develop a nice walkway to lead you to a front door. So this is simply, just keep in mind what this library looks like today. So let's go to the next one. The question about the, how the library ties into the community center, these three photographs are from the parking lot side. Now I don't see any indication of a Queen Anne building here. And the lowest level is where the rec department is, where those four windows are behind those three cars. The entrance to the community center is right in back of that parking sign. So the staff area for the library will, will be, you can see a person to the right of the rec department looking down over a fence. That little fenced area would remain. And so the library would start right where that person is standing. And it would be a little bit taller, but about the same height as the rec department part of the building. And that's the library staff area. So remember this as we go to that in a minute. Because that's what we're tying into this tandem facade. And how it relates, it's, I would call it a solid facade with small punched windows in it. And of course, the up photograph on the upper left will be filled in. And you can see the scale of the current library to the right of the left-hand photograph. The new building would be about the height of the rec department. So you can see it's a little bit taller, probably three or four feet taller than the library. So let's go to the next one. So try to remember this as we talk about that.
Sorry, can I, can I interrupt really briefly just to make sure I understand correctly on that last slide, if you wouldn't mind going back? Would the entrance be where that entrance is now or would it be where the person is on the bottom?
Neither. It would be close to where the current library pops out from the, where the library starts, right where that handicap parking sign is.
Yeah.
Right there. It would be about there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to the next. Here's a view of as much as I could show of the relationship between the two buildings. The arched shape over the center entrance there would be removed as will that sloped roof. And the library gets built out because right at that recess over the depressed parking is where the lounge is. The lounge is where that arched shape is. Okay? And so when we talk about trying to tie in, the community center and office building is a two-story and it really looks like a four-story building because it's on stilts and it has a sloped roof. That's another story. The library is basically a one-story building. And it has a fairly large footprint. To do a building that has a bunch of sloped roofs, you need gable ends. So you need narrower pieces of the building so that you can go ahead and create a gable. The building now is about 125 feet square. So it's really squat, if you will. So, but we've tried to make a gesture toward the building, but we're not trying to, to copy it. So I'm not sure I would call your existing community center a, I would call it traditional in its proportions, but that's about it. So let's keep going. I know this is a long time coming, so I appreciate, appreciate this. All right, so let's, here are the three options. All the way to the left of all three of these is, can, Jessica?
Yeah.
Go, put your cursor on the top one.
Yeah.
Right where the white border of the slide hits the building and then right there. That what she's pointing to in essence is the existing rec department. So what we're trying to say is there are three entrances here. And we can, and the entrances all have an entrance and on the left side, which is brick, are the toilets. On the right side is the meeting, is the program room. So that composition is a fairly solid composition from the toilet to the program room. So we have three different ways of looking at the connection between the rec department and I'll call it the toilet area. One is to make it a void, glass. So you have solid in the rec department, void, if you will, in the staff area, and then a solid composition of the entrance. And then we go to void again where the library takes off. So that's the number two, also has a little less of a void, but it has a big overhang. And the third says, let's just continue the solid mass of the rec department right into the entrance. So that solid mass goes all the way to the right side of the program room. Now you can, and now let's focus on the three entrances. One, the top one has kind of a couple of columns and a lower sheltering entrance. The middle one simply, simply has a projected cantilevered entrance saying, here's the front door. And the third has a little bit more demonstrative sloped entrance to make it a little bit more dramatic. Beyond that, all three options begin and they take off from the right-hand side of the program room into a composition of glass or glass and solid. You can see at the top one, we begin to introduce a little bit more solid. And that's in the children's area because the children's librarian said, we need some more solid walls to be able to hang things and we need a little bit more solid. The next two are really pretty much glazed. But enables anybody who's coming from Philadelphia Avenue or parking to look into the library and see what is generally the most exciting part of the library, which is the children's area. The shelving is lower, there's color, there's activity. So that's the first slide. So keep in mind, that's one thing I wanted to focus on. The, the transition between the rec department and the entrance and the character of the entrance. Let's go to the next. So as we begin to go around the corner, the top one has the expression of a lot of horizontal mullions and sun shades. And frankly, it was simply to simply an architectural expression. The middle one is fairly simplistic and simply has sheets of glass. But it's still more of a glassy building. The lower one has similar to the middle one, although you see on the Philadelphia Avenue side introduces panels of brick. And I will tell you.
Remind us again, please, the, the relative, the, the order of which, which one is the most expensive, which is the least expensive?
The most expensive is one.
Thank you. And the least is.
I will also tell you that we can do a little bit of a Mr. Potato Head here. And in effect, pick something from each one. So let's go to the next slide.
And the least expensive is option two.
Correct. So here at the top, we see from, in effect, from Philadelphia, right to the corner of the slide on the right, you see the edge of the bus stop, blue. So in the first, we have the horizontal lines, we introduce some brick. We carry the horizontal lines through the brick simply so that they're not just panels of brick, but they have some interest. They could be just a different color brick. The middle one simply shows glass, that you have a glass box. And the bottom one illustrates something fairly similar to the top one, but without much detail. The at this time, the right-hand side, the, the larger of the brick panels has the quiet study behind them. And so it gives a little bit more containment and privacy to quiet study. Let's go to the next one.
Hi, hi, um, this is.
Sorry, Talisha, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Quick question. Um, so on the prior slide, you show quite a few mature trees there. And one question I have about the glass front, the side with the more glass front facade is, you know, the impact that when the sun is kind of at that weird angle that most of us that have, you know, windows. windows know, where the sun is shining directly in, which makes it really a pain to have lots of glass because it makes it difficult to do work and you may need to kind of shield things a little bit. Have you given any thought to how that could potentially impact particularly like option two?
Yes. There's two things that we, I mean, maybe three things that we do. One is to use some overhangs or sunshades. And that only deals with suns at certain angles. The second is that we can call, we can treat the graph glass, and we call it fritting. And the glass doesn't have to all be the same. You get little tiny dots in glass that begin to filter the sun. And only so much of it can get by. And the third thing we, we usually do is we put shades, not Venetian blinds, but a translucent, in some cases transparent fabric shades that can be used and pulled down over, over glass. Many of the libraries that we've done have those.
And so in terms of like the cost that we just kind of chatted a little bit about, and I know it was mentioned that option two, as of right now, bare bones is the cheapest. Were, were like shades or anything like that put into the cost estimate? Or would that be something that we would need to decide on, an additional option or an add-on?
That we have one big shade on that one. We have a whole series of them in the top one. And we have sort of a combination in the lower one.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so let's go to the next one.
Actually, Mr. Lookmeyer, before you move on, I just, since we're on the glass and the windows and everything. And other, I know the, the, the library in Silver Spring also does have a lot of windows and glass. Any lessons learned from doing that project now that it's been open for a couple of years? I mean, I've been there a bunch, not lately, obviously, but just sort of thinking about that library and anything, you know, again, lessons learned for this project.
One of the things about that library, it has a hot, very high floor-to-floor height. It's 18 feet from floor to floor. So there's incredible amount of glass. And the charge to us from our clients, and that was not the library staff, but the folks who were directing us, wanted a statement building that would have a lot of wow factor. And that was their top priority. And so we had to do quite a bit to overcome some of that because of the amount of glass. Despite the fact that we received a LEED bold certification for that building, it is right on the edge and the whole back is fairly solid. We almost could not, we almost had to take out a chunk of that glass. But the county did not want it removed. So it's always interesting, you know, everybody has a different sense of values. Everybody has something they're trying to achieve, and it's not for everybody. So, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not heard any feedback. But I'll be more than happy to contact them and try to see what they say. It does have shades. It has what's called Mecca shades.
Well, I can say, you know, not to speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I, I will dare to for a moment. I would say we are not looking for a statement building with a lot of wow. We are, we are looking for something that says to come apart our, our little library, but with more space. So, yes.
And you know, it's interesting, and I'm hoping I'm not gonna screw up the train of thought here. But one of the comments about tying into the existing building with a lot of roofing shapes is that this library with, I'll call it flat roofs, but they're not flat, is the least expensive way to enclose that space. If I created a series of stair steps with narrow areas with higher nave-like spaces with pitched roofs, this would be a much, much more expensive building. So frankly, by keeping the roof, kind of like it is right now, it's a flat roof, and trying to do something nice to the ceiling, and we're talking about wood and that sort of thing, to make it homey, will go a long way toward keeping the feel. So let's go to the next one. Now, I'm sorry, I'm out of sequence. The top one had that swoopy roof and the lot, next two didn't. And I was just trying to show you what the difference was. I'm not pushing any of these. Let's go to the next one. I don't think this is the greatest view. The reason I want to show you this one is it illustrates three things. And look at the top one, on the left, all the way to the left, you can see the swoopy roof versus the other two, which simply have a overhang. They all deal with the mosaic a little differently. The top one simply puts a band over the top of it, just to cap it. The second one simply lets the glass go right over it. And simply keeps, and that's the height of the existing mosaic. And so it's simply a framed picture, in effect, surrounded by glass. And the third put a picture frame around it, whether it's yellow, blue, green, it was a picture frame. The third thing I wanted to point out is the lounge, which is the box, the brick box on the first two. And then the second, last one is more glass, but it has the slope, much like the entrance did at the other side. So it's a higher, it's a higher volume. It's like one and a half stories. And that is intended to make that connection with the two-story community center next to it. So we're trying to step down from the three-story or two-story to the one and a half, to the one. And to put a transition piece between, with a fairly solid brick mass, we use either brick or a different shape. And then the rest of the library, with the exception of the mosaic, was glass. So look and see how big that mosaic is and how much glass is left. So if you really look at that, there's not much glass on that side. If there's 30%, I'd be surprised. So despite the fact that at least some of this looks like it's all glass, there's a considerable amount of solid. So let's go to the next one. Can we go to the next one?
Yeah, I'm trying. Hold on.
Oh.
Not sure what happened. There we go. All right. So I'm gonna pull up the animations now. And I'm going to see if I can. All right, can everyone see that? The animation? Great. All right, we're gonna start, yep, this is option one. So here we go. And there's no sound.
Has the glass connection, then the solid. And you can see the brick with the lines. Corner with the bus stop. Philadelphia Avenue. The swoopy roof. And you can see the community center. And of course, the lounge. So that was the first one.
Okay. Any requests to replay or pause at any point before I go to the next one? All right, let me move on to number two here. This is the cheapest.
Now here, also glass at the staff area, very simple entrance. Pretty unarticulated glass. So it's a glass box on purpose, simply to show you an option. Does not have a swoopy roof, very simple. And the mosaic with the glass going over the top. And a very simple lounge space. That will have a great view outside. And then here's with this, this more solid staff area that ties into rec department. More demonstrative entrance. Elevation with, begins to have more glass, similar to the first one. It says a frame around the mosaic. And a more dramatic sloped roof for the lounge. So they're not dramatically different, partly because they all use the same floor plan. And without being trite, you know, what, there are three different candy shells that you can put on a, develop in response. Now, if in fact, the library took on a slightly different shape, it would have a different architectural appearance. But in all cases, we would have a reasonable amount of glass, both to make it a healthy building, to be able to see in, which is a real, it would draw people in. What's in there? Let's go find out what's in there. Let's use the library. And when you're in the library, being able to sit outs, look outside and connect to the outside. And quite frankly, if we're, we use glass properly, you can actually spend a lot of the days with only half the lights on in the library, which actually cuts down on energy consumption as well. And we've, we've seen that in, in other libraries where we have, let's say, three bulbs in a fixture, and we only need one half of the day. And then automatically more come on as the interior gets darker. So there are some energy advantages to glass. It's not just a, you know, something that allows heat and cold through. So part of this has to do with appearance. From the library standpoint, when you look at the plan, they are getting a bigger children's area, they're for the first time getting a public program space that can be used not only for storytime, but community meetings, films, lectures, whatever, any kind of community meeting, the staff finally gets enough space to breathe. For those of you who've been in the staff area of the library, it's, it's not good. It enables, it does not add a whole lot of collection, but it does spread out the shelving to make sure it meets ADA. It has appropriate restrooms that not only meet ADA, but meet code, responds to a healthy building. And certainly in these days of this virus, it's becoming more and more, in fact, we're talking about filtration in new buildings and seeing what we can do to make them even cleaner inside. Your existing library, as you know, is anything but a healthy building. So there are some very advantages. I received a question earlier today about the size. And that's why I started out saying, we, the program that was developed said it needed a minimum of about 16,000. You can build about 19,000 on that piece of property. If you built less, yes, it'll cost a little less, not dollar for dollar. But, so there are some options. And of course, there are different ways of cladding the exterior. And I'm also very interested in hearing people's reaction to quote fitting in or being appropriate in its aesthetic with the existing community center, which really has only one dominant side, and that's the front door.
Great. This is, this is Suzie. I was just wondering if, if maybe a, I don't know if something where the different council members would say something about, like which version they like, or a quick hand vote that might help answer several of these questions. Might be an approach.
I was also thinking, and from what Mr. Lookmeyer said, that I think you use the Mr. Potato Head analogy, that it may be helpful. I don't know if the, let's see, how can we do this? If there was a way to, if we have these questions, I wish we could put up, is there a way to put these questions to send them to council? And then we could put up the, the, the three different designs? So we could have those both? Or I guess each of us could take a screenshot of them? Because I just want to have, so that we could go through, each council member could kind of go through them.
Sure, yep, I can, I can email that out now.
Yeah, that might be helpful. And then we could pull up. I, I will say, I do like the flyover view as the deputy city manager is doing that. Because I think it provides more perspective in terms of the building versus the, the images that when we put those out to the public, I do think sometimes those images make it look much bigger than what we're looking for. And I, I appreciate the flyover view because it, it gives a better perspective in terms of the height of the building and how it does fit in with the community center and everything else. One question I had, and then we can go into these other questions, is, I was just thinking, as you were talking, Mr. Lookmeyer, about in, in the back, the children's area. And many times we have evening programs where we have authors come and things like that. And it just, and I'm sure we could reconfigure things, but it just struck me of thinking about headlights of cars coming into the, the parking lot. And whether or not we do want that side all glass because of evening programs. And I don't know if that's something we should consider, but I hadn't thought about it before until we were looking at it this evening.
Well, in, in response, if you think that the headlight is about three feet above grade, the first two feet of all of these options are, are solid wall because it becomes the flood wall.
Okay.
So frankly, we could raise the sill height throughout the library so that it's just above a headlight size. Now, obviously, there are only a couple of cars that are gonna be pointed directly into the library. And the others are, you know, obviously on, on an angle. And it's actually curved at that location. So I think cars will block it. I think too, and we're hoping to do a little planting around the perimeter as well.
Cool. I just wanted to raise that. And I, I'm sure Ellen and our library staff would, would know best. But I'm also just, you know, thinking about kids gathering around and like, the last thing you want is car headlights as we're planning this. So, great. So I see some of my colleagues' hands of people, if we want to kind of ask questions and then go through on aspects that you find attractive or not. And we can see if we can come up with some good direction. So Councilwoman Kostick, why don't we start with you?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I agree, it is, it's easier to get a real sense of, of the building from looking at the, the video version. And it actually changed my opinion a little bit as I was looking at it. So I, I do want to get into that and into the discussion, the, the design questions. I know that really is the focus tonight. I, I mean, just for myself and in looking at the project and thinking it through, I had a lot of questions, and I still have a lot of questions that I think are not directly related to specific design choices tonight. And so, I mean, I sent out a, a weekly, my weekly email had a number of questions that I'm thinking about. I sent some questions to staff, and I think they forwarded to you as well, Mr. Lookmeyer. Just kind of thinking through the spaces and thinking through the programs that the library offers. And trying to look at things. through both what we do now and what we might do in the future, and thinking through the racial equity impacts of a project like this, the services that the library provides to the community in terms of, you know, learning materials, Wi-Fi access, computer access, and programming as well. So I have a couple of questions. I think that are more maybe based on the interior space before I talk about the exterior. But one of the things I would be interested in is whether these different designs or some other design allows for additional programming, and it sounds like it does, additional programming that could be done to provide more workforce development offerings, for example, I think particularly due to COVID, libraries are going to be increasingly important in terms of providing educational opportunities for kids and for adults. And I think this is going to be, and currently is, a real center of our community and a place where we want it to be as useful and as beneficial to the community as possible. So I'm just thinking about those things in terms of making sure we're planning the design that allows for those things.
So, May I answer that for a moment? And so one of the things we really looked at at the beginning was exactly that, because we don't, we've had a situation where if we're having a program that's more workforce development oriented, it might be in the children's room, and that's not really an appropriate, comfortable place for those kinds of discussions. The computer areas sometimes also weren't that comfortable. So still having the computer areas, but having a separate program room, and also having the large room that's the lounge, where really could organize itself well for those, for the, for different kinds of workshops and that kind of thing, was something that was part of the original plan. It's part of the whole idea of the 21st century library, that you have that flexibility. The other part that is important to me also is that in the program room and in the, obviously, the computer rooms and in the lounge over the parking would be very tied in with our city TV and other computer technology systems, so that all kinds of production can be done there, or it can, you can watch a program and that kind of thing.
That's great. I would love to see us expand into doing additional workforce development programs in the library. I know there are some nonprofits that work in the DC libraries with tech training and digital literacy and things like that, that I think could really be beneficial.
Very excited about that.
Yeah. And I think if I remember right, the, the program room that has access to sort of that toilet area, is it, am I correct that it would be accessible so that you wouldn't necessarily have to have the whole library open? You could access that room separately?
Yes.
Okay. Um, great. So the other questions I had that were sort of not directly related to the design that we're looking at right here is, what is pedestrian access? And I know we talked about that a little bit at our last work session, and I understand the reasons why the entrance is being put here. And I don't think there really is a totally ideal, easy to put place, you know, for the entrance. It's obviously not ideal where it is right now, and in terms of the structure either. But I do want to make it a place that is inviting for people who are walking from the schools and might be coming either from the pathway going down towards coming in kind of from the Piney Branch Elementary School side, as well as if kids are coming from Tacoma Park Elementary, coming down those, the painted stairs, coming from that side, as well as people coming from the other side of the building. And so I, I don't know if this is possible. I'd be interested in exploring whether there could be a, a shift in the location of the, the entrance and/or a larger sort of pedestrian gathering area there or elsewhere. I think we talked a little bit about maybe there being some option for something over on the children's side, if I'm remembering right, kind of on the, the side where the glass, main glass part of the building is here, for there maybe being some type of gathering area there. I know a lot of times when people are gathering before the library opens, for circle time, for example, on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, there are a large number of kids running around, there are a large number of people with strollers, just sort of hanging out waiting in that area. And so have you given some thought to that and designed with that in mind?
Yes, we haven't shown you any solutions, frankly, because this has been so uncertain, that that ball is up in the air. And I have not even discussed this with anybody in the, in the city, but one of my thoughts, because there is limited side area, was conceivably even eliminating one or two, probably two, if not three, spaces right in front of the quote, front door, and maybe also across from it where the stairs come down from the school, and really neck that down to create both the pedestrian crossing and a gathering space right there. The only other thing I could think of that would really work well is to be frankly, to move the wall of the library that is parallel to the existing sidewalk, back away from it a little bit, show, shave some square footage off the building to really just widen that area so that you could have a walkway, maybe some benches, some landscaping. And to be honest with you, that would probably help with, with the stormwater management too, but we're trying to create, we're trying to create space where it makes sense. And so outside the children's area makes sense, because there are often programs that librarians do with children. And so those are two of the thoughts I had about potentially maybe losing a couple of spaces or moving that wall back and creating a larger open space.
I like the idea of potentially taking some parking space. I do want to flag that actually the city has gotten rid of that additional staircase that comes, came down in the middle there because of the safety issues of people crossing, kids running across the parking lot, so that, I don't think that would work. But if you, I, I think you should take a look at that, and I would love to see some, some options there for what would be available to the entrance area.
There's also, there's also a few other places that are more near the lounge, or also just, I think around where he was talking about some, some of the stormwater areas, you know, if you've got a pretty landscaped area, there may be some seating or something else that might be in that area. I mean, one of the things that has been frustrating to me is I want to get to the place where we're talking about the exterior landscaping and paths, but until we get the building kind of figured out a little bit, that's not been the time that we've spent on it. One aspect, though, that I do want to mention is that, you know, we want a really pleasant pathway that goes along the building, connecting the schools to Philadelphia, et cetera. But also, I think the only, you know, one of the important things to consider about the third entry, the third on this slide, is that that may be a little bit more visible from Philadelphia to show where the entrance is. And so, you know, something that kind of, also from a building perspective, helps direct that comfortable pathway, and you see where to go, is also important. One question we get often is why can't we have an entrance from Philadelphia? There's all kinds of flood reasons we can't. So part of the landscape also is to really comfortably direct people to the appropriate entrances.
Yeah, one of the things too, and I, that the librarians have said over the last couple of years, as we've talked about circulation, is that they have, there's a perceived problem of kids going from the community center, walking through the middle of the library to get to the bus stop. And they've always said, gee, is there a way that we can divert or allow that to happen without disrupting the patrons? And whether that's valid or not, I don't know, but in the current plan, they actually come into the library and just cross in front of the circ desk and leave at the entrance where it is now. If you think about moving the entrance around the side to Philadelphia, you really do have a streak. Whether that's important or not, or a deal killer with the users, I don't know.
Um, I know my colleagues have questions too, so I don't want to, to take too much time, but I did want to just toss out another outdoor perimeter idea, which is given particularly during COVID times, and I think as well afterwards, we've seen a demand for people wanting to use the Wi-Fi. And so I was wondering if we could create either on that side area, which I know you, you set aside as, as possibly needing the buyer retention facilities, but either on the side or in the front there, if there could be some area maybe with tables for people to sit and bring their own devices and utilize the Wi-Fi when the library isn't open, I think that could be of real value. So then, I guess, in terms of making decisions on the, the specific designs, I certainly have some preferences. I think overall, to me, keeping the cost down so that, I would say, keeping the cost down at the expense of, of it being simply a design feature versus a functional feature, to me, I would rather spend the money on something that is going to provide us with more functionality and, and make it a more usable and long-term, you know, have longer term capacity versus having a design feature that, that might just look a little prettier. That's kind of where I would come down on that. I personally, just in terms of how the, the front looks here, I like what the city manager noted in terms of maybe having something more inviting from Philadelphia, but I don't particularly care for number three in terms of the entrance. I think I liked number one best in terms of the entrance, and I think the building for number two best, probably. My question for the side, there was a side view of all of them as well. And I think it was number one, if you can keep going, I think one more, or maybe you went too far. Sorry, could you go back to? There you go. Number one, looks like it has a sign that says Tacoma Park Library on it, and the other two don't. Is that something that would be possible with the other two options?
Yes, we'd have to do something different if it were mostly glass, obviously. It may be individual letters that are mounted that, absolutely. I think you need some sort of signage.
Yeah, I liked, I liked that. I didn't necessarily have, like I said, I think number two, based on cost and just general design, I think, works. But I did, I do like the idea of having a, some type of signage there. Um, and then for me, I guess, I would say I would like some more information as we go forward in terms of the square foot costs. The square, you know, the, the cost of different square footage options. The, the different energy efficiency costs. You know, just sort of those overall costs impacts as we're looking at exactly the decisions we're going to make, so we can kind of, kind of look at it holistically, would be useful.
Yeah, well, the cost estimates that we provided, we had our independent estimator give number two was the baseline, and then the other two, he said, were a little bit more, and I have provided the cost increase for each of those. They're all going to have the same energy cost.
Well, but I guess I was referencing for the, when we talked about the geothermal or the V, the VAV, and those, those sorts of options and how those things factor in.
Yeah, I mean, currently, the cost estimate that is now been prepared is based on the VAV system,
Okay.
which is the least expensive of those three. And it's the one that we've probably done 80% of the libraries, and they work very, very well.
Um, great. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I'm sure other people want to share their thoughts as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostic, for modeling how we want to go through this. I very much appreciate that. I see Councilmember Kovar has his hands up, but since we were just talking about the energy efficiency, I know Councilwoman Dibala had some questions on that, so maybe if we just stay on that for another moment. Councilwoman Dibala, do you want to go next?
Yes, just on the, just on the energy piece of it, well, let's start with that. So thank you for, for providing the information that you did, and if I understood you correctly, just to repeat, the cost estimates that we got a while ago are based on the VAV system. And it's the system hooked up to the existing system in the current building. Yes?
It's compatible with it. Yes. We've been working back and forth with John to try to see if we can't use some of the equipment. So that's still, that's another thing that, that's the goal, but it's a little bit on hold right now.
Because, because I had under, at one point, I thought that that's what we were doing, so that makes, makes that not necessarily an option.
No, I mean, the issue is what, because John's doing things that are a little independent of what we're doing. And so that's the only reason why something would be slightly different, but that's the basic goal.
If, if I might, this, what we're trying to, there's a lot of excess capacity in our existing system.
Right.
And so we want to take advantage of that.
And that would apply to all three of these options, or just to the VRF and VAV?
Just to the VAV. The other two are totally different systems.
Right. Okay, that's what I meant. Okay. And is that factored into the costs that you present here?
Yes.
Is one of the reasons the VAV is, is less? Okay. So I had a couple of questions about what level, remind me what level of LEED we are, you are going for here. You mentioned Silver Spring being LEED certified gold. What, what level are you looking for with this building?
Well, at a minimum, silver, simply because in order to get a building permit, you need to hit at least a silver level.
Right. Well, so when we get further into it, I had asked to see the LEED rating sheets because I meant to see what the difference would be in going from the minimum required in Montgomery County, which is lead silver, to something more, and what the different features are that you could incorporate to, to take that next jump.
Yeah, and we've, we've actually begun to prepare that, but things have been on hold, so we haven't really shared that and sat down, because you folks are going to be participating, have to participate in it from a user standpoint. And so some choices that you have that you could do will cost more, some less. We haven't had what we call, what's called a LEED charrette
Okay.
to do that yet, so we will.
Okay. And so in terms of the orientation of the addition, how did you look at the issue of passive solar and daylighting? Did you just assume the similar footprint? Or did you think about what would happen if you played with the, with the orientation in order to capture more daylighting and more, and more passive solar?
I think a couple, a couple of things in answer to that question. We basically started with the shape to get the maximum size library, and have begun to work on the passive aspects through shading and kind of materials and the kind of glass. So it's been more of a reaction to the shape rather than starting with the most optimum shape, which may have given you half the size of the library.
Right, okay. And you mentioned in passing photovoltaics. Could you say a bit about the, the options for solar on the roof and whether they are included in any of your designs and your energy costs now or not?
They're not included in the energy costs. Right now, the city has a contract with a vendor who, I guess, owns the photovoltaics. You get some of the benefit of it, but they were installed by a vendor, not by, and it would be, would not be something we would do, assuming that the city continues with the contract with the vendor.
So that would be something that I would be interested to hear some more about, not tonight, but between the city staff and yourself, more on how that would work out and what the impact would be on, on the maintenance and energy costs for the building. And then just on this topic of Just on this topic of green, one final question, two, two, two points. I agree with Councilmember Kostic that. That that most of the people who use this library walk and most of those people are young. And so while I understand where the. Entrance needs to be for floodplain purposes, I would very much encourage thinking about outdoor spaces. For that can be used and I and I completely completely agree with the with looking at pushing back that wall. Seeing if some, what that would do both to the interior space, particularly. Uses of the interior space and of course also costs. But my final, my final question, I think, on green issues is you mentioned the bio retention. And of course, if you have solar on the roof, you're not gonna have a green roof. But on the bi bio retention facilities, are you talking about a basin or are you talking about more like a like a swale or rain garden style?
More of a rain garden style.
Okay, good, 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 hear that. Thank you for clearing that up and. And I'm assuming at some point you are gonna look into the green roof piece, but I'm gonna guess. The the basin, the, not the basins, the swales are gonna win out cost wise.
They really will. The the issue with the vegetated roof is that you you have to put a lot more structure in to hold up the roof. So it just is, and just the detailing of how you build the boat so that doesn't leak inside is. A little bit more sophisticated, so it does cost more.
So I can hold off on my reactions about. The building, the exterior space, the interior space.
Why don't you go ahead, go ahead, since you got the, you have the floor, go ahead.
I also am a little more focused on cost than the differences between three very similar designs. I. I had a strong reaction to the yellow frame around the mosaic. I like the mosaic to stand by itself. I'm not crazy about the swooping of the roofs, but the the more important thing to me. Is how the outside spaces is affect, it it works with the interior space and what is. Functional versus decorative, I think is very important to me also. And speaking of the interior space, so at at some point, I would like to hear a little bit more about. The flexibility, for example, you say, well, well, there's a little bit more of book space, not a lot. Are those flexible spaces so that as needs change in the twenty first century? Things can be moved around a bit. I don't need to hear that now, but I I think there's a lot of residents that are. Very interested in hearing more about the interior space and how it responds. To the changing needs of of a library for the for the time that we're in now. I also echo that I think the equity benefits of this were perhaps not as. Well expressed in in the cover sheet as as they could have been. There's clearly some very powerful. Reasons from an equity perspective to be doing this project. And. I wonder if it's possible to get. Some kind of schematic that doesn't just connect this design to. The little bit of the building that's next to it, but is there some way to look at it from the whole building from Philly? From from Maple. Because that's, a lot of people are looking at it from that perspective. They're seeing. The main entrance, as you said, that's the main entrance to the community center. And seeing the whole scope down through the mosaic, which kind of catches your attention right now. The rest of it's not very memorable, as you said, in the current library. So what does? How does that look? How does that integrate in the bigger picture? If there's something you can show us that would that would illustrate that, I would really appreciate it. Is that it? That might be it. Give me one more minute. Yeah, I think that I think that might be it for me. Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I do think that. I would, I would go the, in the, probably in what was it called, the Mr. Potato Head direction, because I see some positive things in. In each of them, and so I'm not quite sure how to. Capture all of that, and I do have some more specific questions, but I would just say in general, in terms of my overall. Reaction, I'm not really into the the swooping roof concepts and. I think that in terms of the way the building meshes with the the community center. It doesn't seem like a, as huge a difference from the, from the parking area side, but. On the other side, the main sort of link, it looked like from the presentation was where that so-called teen lounge is. Which is sort of a halfway stepped up point between the very low single story of the. Main body of the library and then the the somewhat higher portion of the main community center and so. Yeah, that, yeah, right, so. To me, that bottom one that that shoots up like that. Doesn't offer as much to me as as one of the other two, but if we've talked at times about that. Lounge being kind of a discrete component of of this that potentially we could see not doing to save money if we needed. To do that later in the year. But if you didn't have any of that there, and you didn't have the yellow border around the mosaic. The connection between the library and the existing community center would really look about the same as it does now. Isn't that more or less, right?
Right.
Because that's the only new part in terms of the way the two buildings connect there is that the the lounge is the. Is the intersection between the two, right?
Correct.
So one of the questions I had is, what's the, because on all three of these, there's components of glass and components of brick. And so what's the difference in cost per segment of the glass versus brick?
Brick, a brick wall is probably in the thirty five dollar a square foot range. Glass. The simple glass that we're showing is in the sixty, sixty five dollar square foot range.
So you can have more. I mean, to some extent, having a little more brick. It's not gonna be a huge savings, but it could be a modest savings, is that?
Correct.
Yeah, and so, you know, one of the things that strikes me is, you know, you talked about how. People have the ability to look in, you know, maybe families don't want people looking in where the kids are gathering in the children's library, so it seems to me that we could sort of talk about. Where you do and don't want glass a little bit more, and I and I know some people would say. When they're sitting in a library concentrating on something, they like to be inspired by being able to look outside. And other people might say they they want a kind of a closed off. Sanctuary where they don't have to look at that. So I don't know if there's one, if there's one standard way of looking, way of looking at, but in terms of the, I think the mosaic should stand by itself. And so, you know, the middle one, which is the glass piece above it, is probably the best. And I think if we if we had to go with one of the lounge ones, I would go with one that's more brick than not. I do think the entrance on the on the parking lot side that has the two columns that sort of matches up with. What I think are kind of the two columns down the main entrance to the community center that comes off the parking lot, those seem to match up. A little bit better to me, so I sort of favor those. And just in terms of going back to the Philadelphia entrance for a minute, so that the idea is, or the concept is, you can't really have a even a small door there because that's. Right at the spot where there's the most concern about the about the potential for flooding. Is that, am I getting that correctly?
Yes.
And what's the, what's the setback, roughly speaking, from the part that curves out towards Philadelphia and the actual sidewalk or street of Phil?
I was gonna ask Jessica if you could go back to the site plan. The civil engineering plan. There, whoops.
All this?
Yes. I maybe get some bearing of.
So from the, where the curve spot is, that's the spot where it gets closest to Philadelphia and then as it curve, as it is back toward the. Parking.
Where the, where the curve is, is where the flagpole is.
You're right, in fact, the set, flagpole is shown in this drawing, right at the curve.
Okay. Well, we.
In the circle, that's where the flagpole is.
Get that distance, it would be good to have that. So in terms of green issues, my two colleagues have covered a lot of that. The one other piece of it, and maybe it's premature to ask about this, but. A component of. Trying to respond to climate change is also how far. The materials have to be shipped and things of that nature, and is that something that you regularly? Have to confront and you have.
Actually, this is a great area for that. We never have any trouble getting the lead points for localized. Supplies. For whatever reason, we use recycled steel, recycled ceramic tile. This is a great area for that, and we never have any trouble with that. One thing, and I I don't want to change the subject, but if you look at this drawing. And you see where that wall is parallel to the parking lot, it's exactly on the line. Of the existing building. The existing building is in a dotted line under this hard line. You can see it? And so, if you remember, the existing building has some space. Between the parking lot and the existing building, some of it's filled in with landscaping and mechanical equipment. So if you cleared all that out, we already have some space that we could really begin to develop. Anyway, sorry to change.
So you mentioned that the current library is ninety four hundred square feet and this would be about.
Not quite, no.
So, but the nineteen thousand doesn't include things like the so-called rec department improvements?
No.
The additional shifting of the. Computer lab there, the additional.
The computer labs are in that nineteen thousand.
Oh, they are, okay, okay.
Yes.
And and the lounge and the programming room are also?
No, they are not.
They're not, okay.
No, the the program is, the program room is part of that.
Yes, it is. I thought he said the lounge, I'm sorry.
The lounge is, lounge is not, right?
Correct.
So I think the other thing that would be helpful, because I've gotten a number of questions about that, is if the library itself is nineteen thousand. Square feet, but in terms of what else we're adding this new. What the additional square footages that we're adding this new, just to understand that, I know this is slightly separate from the exterior. Points that we're talking about, but I think it would be helpful just to understand in terms of. Literally new square footage, what we're talking about, and maybe that can be provided separately. But but again, I, me, in the, in terms of the overall exterior, I would knock over the swoops. I I would favor a modest increase in brick generally and. To me, the columns are helpful with at the entrance off of the parking lot. I don't know, Mayor, if you were looking for more than that at this point.
I think that was perfect. Everybody's following directions tonight.
Am I a model citizen?
You're a model, you're a model council member, thank you very.
Response to one of the issues you just asked, if the new library is around nineteen thousand. Square feet, the existing library is about ninety four hundred square feet. And so all the new stuff that's being added is associated with the library, so there's a delta of maybe. Nine to ten thousand square feet, which includes, whoops, go back to that. Includes that courtyard between the rec department and the library.
But again, but the lounge is separate, is that right, is beyond the nineteen?
The lounge is on the opposite side, it's over where.
But that's not part of the nineteen thousand, I guess that's.
Correct, correct.
All right, that, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation tonight and all the work that you've put into this. I. I have to wonder, I see that your beard seems to be getting longer, your hair seems to be getting whiter. This is, this is, this takes some time to do this work.
It does, it does.
You know, I did, just to simplify things, I would like to first associate myself with the comments. That Councilmember Dibala made earlier. With just a little bit difference on. The the choice of the Mr. Potato Head look of the building. I. I think, you know, number two is is good. I like it, not just because it's the cheapest, but it's also, I think. Looks good, and I like the way that the mosaic is. Kind of stands there by itself with the glass surrounding it. And all I would say is that I would be persuaded for something different if we're talking about different functionality. But I see no reason to. Increase the cost for any other reason other than functionality, and they all look look attractive. And that's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Circe.
Hello, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I I will say that, you know, I'm the kind of person that wants it cute and cheap, right? I don't want to to have something that I don't like looking at just because it was two dollars cheaper, but I am. Definitely cost conscious when it comes to this project. I I agree with what others have have mentioned in terms of the Mr. Potato Head approach. One question I have, if we go back to the front, the slide with the front, the entryway, yeah. So one question I had about. Option two, and one of the things that I like about that entrance is that it doesn't have any pillars. That might obstruct the ability to use more of the sidewalk space. And I guess one question I have is, you know, is that a standard sidewalk, or when we get to the point where we start talking about. Some of the exterior, like, is it possible for us to increase the the setback or increase the width of that that sidewalk space so that there would be? More space and it's not kind of broken up by the pillars that you would see in options one and three, so it would make it a more. Space. Yeah, so I do, I do like that idea and I like the fact that it means that we would have another opportunity to use some external space of the building. In terms of. The side view, so I like the full glass. I am struggling to see. How we could incorporate. The name, you know, the signage, right? And whether or not it would mean, you know, again, kind of taking that Mr. Potato Head approach of. Either adding some, like one brick panel or something to allow for that signage that that wouldn't just be like. Letters on glass, but you know, is there some way to be, that we can incorporate the brick, perhaps not as much as options. One and three, but maybe like that one sliver, I don't know what it looks like, you, you're the architect, but that one sliver that has like the city of Tacoma Park. Library on it into option two, and whether or not there would be a lot of additional costs tied to that. And then when we're talking about the mosaic on the back. I I like the no frame, no frills, just the mosaic. I I do like that option for for two. And then, you know, I do want to echo one of the points that Councilmember Kostic brought up about making sure that folks can have access to. When we're building out the the tech infrastructure for for the space. Making sure that we're allowing or creating opportunities for people to access free wifi on the campus, not necessarily that you have to be within the building. If I had my druthers, the city of Tacoma Park would have free free wifi access across the city. There's a number of different cities that allow, that do that, and I think we're small enough to to make that happen. And it definitely would help to decrease the digital divide that we know exists amongst many. Um, and it definitely would help to decrease the digital divide that we know exists amongst many, particularly black and brown residents in the city. So um but I guess all of that talk in, and I'm leaning towards option two. Give or give or take a brick panel.
That's fine. That's good. Good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great. Um, all right, I don't see any other hands, so I I guess it's my turn. I'll go. Um, I'll just reiterate some of the things that have been said by my colleagues. Um, I think overall, as um I'm approaching this, um also wanting to keep the cost down, and if I had to sum sum it up, it's it's durability with style. Um, this is going to be a heavily used um resource in our community. And I want to make sure it stands the test of time and it looks good. Um, and if there are places where I don't want to kind of go on the cheap, it's the places that um are gonna, you know, get worn out really fast um and that we're gonna have to replace, or it's gonna, we're gonna see it sooner. Um, so I think I'm I'm associating myself with Councilwoman Kostic, who talked about, you know, keeping the cost down, looking more at functionality and usability, and I would just add durability to that. Um, I think like many of my colleagues, I'm kind of leaning towards um number two um in terms of the entrance. I I do like, I I don't like the pillars um for the reasons that um Councilwoman Circe were talking about. I'm thinking, I was thinking of people with strollers and other things, and if we don't need them, I don't think they really add, and they're just obstructing the um the area. Um, I think we're hearing loud and clear, no yellow framing of the mosaic, and I will just add my voice to that. And if there's anything else that we know conclusively tonight, it is no uh yellow framing of that. Let's see, I I do think um having a bit more brick and not uh all just glass, um I like how that looks, how it breaks up, and and the signage um from the view we're looking at here. Um, agree with the the comments on the swoopy roof. Um, I think I the thing I like. Um, Jessica, if you could switch to the now the other view where you see that that, yeah, that one. Number one, I really dislike. I think two and three kind of capture it, and it just, again, that's for me more of the direction of our library um rather than number one. Um, I also agree um having some options and hearing back from you about maybe pushing back a bit and creating more space. So there could be tables and places where people could um access the Wi-Fi would be good. And I think that's that's it for me. I think. So um, Mr. Luke Meyer, do I feel like what I was hearing is a a lot of consistency, that maybe one or two places um not um completely, but did we give you um enough direction? Oh, I see Councilwoman DeBala has her hand up.
Yes, thank thanks. I just wanted to say one thing. I understand that the results of the survey were that slightly more people liked three. To me, it wasn't a runaway like some of the other surveys we have, where seventy five, eighty percent of the people like one choice. And I also was struck by how many people didn't either didn't like any of the choices or weighted them equally and had other concerns that were more important. So I just wanted to to show my view of how where we're going relates to the survey results we had at the beginning of the night. That's all.
Yes, and I was just gonna say that I think the nice thing about the survey were also the written responses. Um, and so, um, and I know from the responses uh Mr. Luke Meyer gave in his presentation before we started to speak, it's it's clear that you have looked at the survey results and already started to think about some of those things um in terms of the next steps. Um, so, yeah, so is there anything else you need from us?
I think I'm good. I think that uh this gives me enough direction so that I may be able to push and pull a little bit. And I think the biggest takeaway has to do with, and I know Susie's been talking about this for the entire time, to create that pedestrian connection and and some sort of an outdoor space. So I think that we can make everything work.
Great. Um, Councilmember Kovar, did you have something else?
Well, I did have one other thing I wanted to mention, but uh not if you're in the middle of something else. Um, so.
We have the rest of the council meeting, but.
Well, it has to do with what we're talking about. So um I just want to see where this fits into the broader discussion. So we're talking about primarily the exterior today and other matters related to that in order to uh give Mr. Luke Meyer some guidance to do the additional design work. But now at a certain point this year, at the end of that design process, then we're gonna have another session with him where the design work will be more quote unquote final. And at that stage, that then we're going to get more uh details on potential costs and then ultimately make a be closer to making a decision about whether what we do on construction and so on. Is that is that a fair statement of where we are and?
Yes, correct. We're just, this is just the next step so that we, Mr. Luke Meyer, can work with the engineers, get the cost estimates. And as we talked about uh in April, um when we last talked, was to kind of give us some options um in terms of um some things. Um, and I know I don't have those notes in front of me, but I know there were a number of areas we identified um in terms of um different options for what we could do or maybe delay um and cost options so that we.
Depending on the cost, right? And I think that, you know, one of the things that's really different than from when we started this project is the fact that you you know, we are in a different environment. So the getting the expertise of the independent cost estimator throughout this project is going to be really important. Um, and I think, you know, there's going to be some things that we can save on and some things that might be different. Um, and so um one of the things that I like about this evening so far is that I heard a lot of consistency among the council members about direction. And so I think there's a lot to work with, and then to bring things back for when there's some individual questions or whatever, we could bring those back before or or else just even, you know, ping people about a particular issue that might come up before it comes back to the full council.
And just.
With the cost estimates.
Do we have a a rough estimate then for when this phase of the design process would likely be completed? And we would be in in that position where we could really look at costs and then start to think about what we want to do in terms of um construction?
I'm assuming that it would be in that we can get you the next piece of information, certainly by the beginning of September.
Okay.
Great. Terrific. Um, all right. Well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Luke Meyer. It's this is exciting to move this forward and see this. So um I had a question um on the the the, what do we call them, the flyby videos? Um, Jessica, are those things we can put up on the website so people could look at them?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, I just think they're really help. Again, I'm just gonna say, I think they're just really helpful to provide perspective um on this as people continue to kind of look at it and think about the project. So, great, awesome. All right. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it, and we're now gonna move on to trees, right? I'm gonna get pull up my agenda. I think we uh are doing trees now. Um, yes, are the first thing. Um, so we have the um the tree canopy and urban forest resolution, and then the um ordinance. Um, let's see, I'm gonna first turn it over to um Councilwoman DeBala, Kostic, and Kovar um to tee us up. And I'm gonna find out, can I share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, I will find, as as you all speak, I'm gonna pull up the um resolution document.
So just as an overview uh to refresh us where we where we where we are. Um, last week, we had extensive discussion about the resolution, particularly about the no net loss goals and about how to operationalize the equity provisions that are in the resolution. So um and then we we didn't spend as much time on the ordinance, just on a couple of particular places. And so tonight, what we would like to do is return to the tree resolution for specific amendments that have been suggested um to talk uh about, again, about the tree replanting replacement requirements specifically to look at the um impact of some options that uh the Public Works Director's analysis showed us. We asked last week for some more analysis of what if we had different, something different from what we originally, what we had been discussing, what we had proposed on replacement requirements, what those would look like. I mean, then other tree ordinance amendments, if we have time. And um to just to just reiterate for myself, um I think that the ordinance changes generally respond to what we heard in the rest, speaking of a resident survey with some pretty uh powerful directions. Um, I think that what we have in the ordinance responds to some of the more obvious concerns that many residents have. It presents some challenges in terms of of keeping the of maintaining the canopy in the long run. That's why we'll talk about replacement requirements. But I I also think that the resolution in the sense of, this is the first time that that the city council is articulating some goals for what we want, not just for individual trees, but for the health of the urban forest overall, for the importance of the values we place on trees, biodiversity, on climate impacts, et cetera. Considering equity and identifying actions that will address that is 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 also something I think that's that's new and and overdue. And also in the resolution, talking about native uh focusing on native and climate adapted species. Um, again, this is a direction that hasn't been clear clear before. Um, so I think the resolution and the ordinance together set um set some pretty clear direction and different direction for the overall tree program in the city. And and with that, I'll turn it over to either of my colleagues who wants to goes go next. And then we'll walk through the resolution change by change, proposed change by proposed change.
Who's who's next? Casey, Peter?
Hi, go ahead, Peter. I don't actually have anything more to add at this point. I I think we're, I'm more or less ready to delve in a little bit, but go ahead, Councilmember Kovar.
I just wanted to say one thing. I my, for some reason, my hand raise uh technology isn't working right then. I think I really am following on with on what Councilmember DeBala said, which was a really great lead into what we're doing. One thing I think that's really important is in the resolution and that it responds to in part to suggestions from from uh Darryl Braithwaite from Public Works is that we're calling within that uh in a much more explicit way than we did before for the staff to um develop a plan for implementing um or moving us toward implementing the goals and the principles that are in the resolution. And when we talked last week, there was a discussion about how the resul- resolution sets out these overall policies as, and so Cindy said, something that we haven't had before here. And then the ordinance is the the nuts and bolts of how it works. Well, it doesn't really, we're missing something if we don't not only say, here are the goals and principles, but we're going to have a plan for implementing them. And so I think there's language that still needs to be worked out there, but um uh on the plan, but that's a fundamental part of this. And I'll just add um one other thing. Um, Councilmember DeBala mentioned the the native species, and I think it's a really important part. I do have a concern and an interest in adding both in the resolution and in the ordinance um some additional language that would strengthen that a bit longer. I've been talking about that with my colleagues. It wasn't quite ready for prime time tonight. And so my guess is it's something that I'll offer when we do the actual uh voting session and amendments um next week. So I'm just mentioning that that's something that will be coming up. And that's all I have to say right now.
Okay.
And just um just to set up the mayor for going through this, this is all the changes that were received. This is not, some of them complement or to some degree don't quite fit together, or there's two options for the same idea. So this is not a a polished consensus version. This is for us to discuss the the options that the language the different council members have put forward.
Yeah, you good? Can you see my screen? Can you see the resolution? All right, good. Sorry, I was like, my screen's rocking up. Okay, so what we're gonna do is um walk through um the changes that have been proposed on the resolution. If you have a change that did not show up in this document, just and I get to that section, just stop and stop me, and we'll consider it, and we'll add it in. Um, so the first change that we have to consider is in the one, two, three, four, fifth warehouse clause. It is the addition of the word shared in front of um community responsibility. Um, I just added that. I didn't, I think it's goes along the lines of what we've been talking about um about shifting kind of the paradigm and how we think about trees um and who's responsible for them. So I just thought that helped. Everybody okay with that? I'm seeing heads nod. All right, just holler if you want to discuss something. Um, all right, and then the rest of the warehouse clauses had no other um suggested changes. Um, okay, so here's a big one. Discussion. Um, there where regarding what we want to have as a goal um for um the uh tree canopy. Um, so one option is to say no net loss of urban forest canopy overall um with the baseline measurement being the average level of tree canopy cover coverage calculated using the last two LIDAR studies conducted and the next study scheduled for twenty twenty two. That's one. And the other is no net loss of urban forest canopy overall with the baseline measurement being approximately sixty percent tree canopy coverage citywide.
Mayor, if I may, I think they both get at the same um idea that we discussed last week of no net loss is great, and how do you?
Measure that.
Bracket, measure it. How do you know when you've succeeded? Um, I would like to point out that option two is a two-part, a two-part addition later on in the resolves to ha- in, I think it's the fourth one. It it said, uh, the suggestion was to have the baseline set for now at sixty percent and to not only do the LIDAR every three years, but actually reevaluate based particularly on this first one coming up, whether that percentage is still valid. So as we talked last week, there's been a big die-off. We don't from from White Oak. There's some other stuff going on. We don't know how bad that is, and we can't, we haven't measured it. That's the next LIDAR. So both of these are getting at a similar idea. Um, so I just want to and 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 the second one has, it's a two-part shuffle on the second one.
Right.
For now, and reassess like, yeah, okay.
I got that. So um so that's that's the second one. On the first one, I had added that after our conversation last week. Given that um looking at what the last two LIDAR studies um had shown and the um conversation we had about the loss that we have experienced over the last two years, um and knowing that um even if we had been planting all the trees we could have or do that right away, um it takes time to build up our canopy. Um, and so I. Um, and so I offered this as the suggestion to, um, to, for us to consider. So council member Kovar, I see your hand.
Yeah, and the two are obviously not that dissimilar. I guess I favor option two, and the reason why is this. In option one, the potential danger is yes, it could, it could give us a more accurate um, measurement on where we are in two years and that it could show what the impact has been. For example, concerning that the oak die-off and maybe other trends that are happening within the city. But we could get ourselves in a ever decreasing spiral if we do that. Because if, if the next, um, LIDAR does show a decline and then, then we factor in one after that and we continue to go down, I'd rather, since this is a goal and the prin- goals and principles are talking about and not a mandate that we somehow, um, uh, must, you know, punish ourselves or spend X dollars to address it if we fall short. I'd rather shoot for something that's ambitious with the understanding that it may be challenging to meet as opposed to aiming low and not being disappointed. And I would add that the way number two, and I'm not sure if this is what council member DeBala was talking about, but in part, the way number two can be, uh, addressed in a more helpful way is in the context of the plan that we're asking the staff to develop. And so in that plan, we can charge them, among other things, with, um, working to take into account any loss that we've seen due to the recent devastation or climate change or other kinds of things. So to me, a baseline is a baseline. That is, that's, that's where we are now. We could, we could say in the language, you know, the baseline can be reviewed every X number of years, if that's necessary. But I'd rather not at this stage sort of set ourselves up for a reduction two years down the road.
Um, all right. Can we see a show of hands? Oh, Councilwoman Kostick, did you want to add something?
Yeah, um, I actually just wanted to see, maybe if Ms. Braithwaite happens to recall offhand. Um, what, I was trying to find it, but I can't, um, what the last two LIDAR measurements were. I believe the last was 58. Was the one before that 62?
It was 59, 62, 58.
So the last two were 58 and 62? Yeah. Okay. So I mean, to me, it seems very much like both of these are going to end up being very similar numbers, honestly. I mean, even if the next LIDAR study, um, were to drop down to like 40%, which I find very unlikely, it's still going to give us a more or less similar general range, um, near, you know, in the 50s. To me, again, this gets kind of at like, what is our, what do we mean by goal? Which is a discussion we had last time, i- in terms of the, the longevity of this. Are we looking at achieving this goal long-term? Is it aspirational? Or is it, um, something that is more realistic and targeted in terms of what we can achieve? So, um, I mean, I, I myself, just looking at these two, I, I have struggled with, with what is the best one and, and how we define this. Um, I think regardless of which one we select, I like, um, the addition later in the resolution that, um, councilmembers DeBala and Kovar, uh, referenced that calls for us to reassess, moving into the, the future and looking at, um, potential need for changes up or down to our tree canopy goals.
Can I just suggest something? What if we put in option two language that indicates that we anticipate reassessing each time the new LIDAR data comes out to assess where, where we're going and how we're doing? So that, that's sort of a blend of the two in effect.
Well, I think that, the councilwoman DeBala, didn't you say that's what is below?
Yeah, I think that is sort of what we're trying to incorporate below.
You could put it there.
I think it's the fourth result. Um, yeah, the one, two, third resolved? Yeah, third resolved, first bullet is what we're talking about. So either way, we can keep that in there is what I think council member Kovar is saying. So that either way, we know that we are taking a look at this because, because we know there's been a white oak die-off and we don't really know how bad it was.
Right. And I guess my point was just putting in there with a baseline measurement being approximately 60%. I, that to me was getting too specific because the last LIDAR was 58%. You know, and so, and we know there's been, so for me, it's, I, I think they sort of do the same thing. And honestly, I, I don't need to debate this much more, um, if there's a majority support for option two. I just felt like it was option, pinning us to this sort of 60%, approximate 60% of a tree canopy was too specific, whereas if we, as I agree with councilwoman Kostick, if we take the last two LIDAR studies and the next study, and we say that's like no net loss from there, that moves us forward. This does not say that we then continue to take each next li- LIDAR study. And it, it does not say that we're going to continually put our, um, whatchamacallit, our level down each time we do it. This says, take the last two and the next one, average it, and then that's our baseline for no net loss. Um, and it can be, and this is just the resolution. So, and a future council can always come back and look at it and reestablish. And I don't know, um, I see Ms. Braithwaite, uh, now on video. If she wanted to weigh in on this.
At this point, no, I, I mean, I, I do share Casey's point of view, which is, does it really, are we getting too deep in the weeds and does the number really matter? It's going to be something in the upper 50s. You know, I don't think programmatically it's going to change what our goal is or what we build to, to maintain or get there.
All right. So let's just do a hand vote. All those in, um, favor of option one, um, raise your hand. That's option one.
Uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's not me. Yeah.
I know that's not. Sorry. Um, I, councilmembers, um, Smith and Cercy, I can't see yous. I don't know. All those in favor of option two, uh, option two, raise your hand. Um, councilmember Smith or Cercy, do you have a, an opinion on these?
Sorry, did not realize my camera was off. So, I mean, I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I, I think that option one is technically the approach that you would take in order to determine what your baseline measure for what your goal should ultimately be is. But I, I agree with what, um, the director of public work said, that, you know, the likelihood of that third LIDAR score coming in and still putting us at about 60% is pretty high. Um, so I don't, I don't quite frankly, see a huge difference between the two. But, but again, I, I, I think with option one, and I'm kind of siding a little bit more with option one because that is technically the approach that you should take, um, in order to establish a baseline and then finalize what your goal, um, your goal should be.
Cool. Councilmember Smith, do you have a preference?
Option two.
Option two? All right. It's option two. Um, okay, um, the next, so we're going to hold, am I correct? Councilmember Kovar on the language on native species and you're working on that.
The very next bullet point is the one on which I'm planning to, uh, offer language next weekend. My hope is that, uh, comity will break out and we'll all agree. If not, I'll offer it and we'll see how the votes fly. But, um, we were working on it this afternoon and it just wasn't enough time to, I didn't want to jam it through at the last minute and, uh, not have it have been really well.
And to be, and to be specific, the question is the part to do with native species, not the part with biodiversity.
Right.
Right, right. All right.
Just so everyone's clear. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next bullet, the changes, um, say, working with those most impacted in the community to increase tree canopy coverage in neighborhoods with a focus on improving more equitable distributed tree canopy over time and increasing efforts to support and maintain existing trees. I think there's a couple of us who made changes to this. I will say the intent, what some of the changes I put in here, was, um, not to create another tree commission or task force. That was not the intent. The intent was to make sure that whatever pilot program we move forward with, whatever the, um, head of public works, the urban forest manager, whatever tree planting programs we're moving forward with, that the members of the community who will be most impacted, whether we're asking them to plant trees on their property or in the right of way in front of their home, or to do other things, that they're included in the, like, their input and they're included in those conversations. I just wanted to call that out, um, to make clear. And I, there may be better wording for here, but, um, that's what the intent was. So, um, yeah.
Can I ask a question? I, I have a little bit difficulty understanding, uh, the concept of those most impacted in the community and how we on a staff level will be expected to determine that. I just, I'm not understanding, um, what that distinction is.
Yeah, so I think I had just members of the community, um, and there were some concerns that that wasn't specific enough. So I was trying to get at, so, I, for example, if we, as we have said, wa, uh, you know, moving forward, if there's a pilot project and we say, okay, this is a neighborhood that does not have as much tree cover as another part of the city. So we want to concentrate efforts here. What we don't want to have happen is just to kind of go in and tell people, we are planting trees here. Um, and to say, you need to, you know, um, there, you have a great backyard and you should have a tree here, or we're planting trees in this right of way, but rather working with that neighborhood to.
Mayor kind of explains who they are in the next resolved clause, the third bullet point, where it talks about most impacted in the community, including, and it mentions some of the people that would be involved. So I, I think this is the goal part, then that's the principal part, and then you get to.
Right. So thank you, councilmember Kovar. So down below it says, working with the most impacted in the community, including property owners, renters and businesses, identifying city processes such as petition-based sidewalk request processes that might per- perpetuate inequalities in tree canopy. Working with the Na- Maryland National Capital Park and Planning regarding maintenance of tree canopy. Well, I guess since this is other thing, so.
Yes, my concern is when we put together a program of community outreach and public meetings and forums, I don't know how to determine if I'm working with those most impacted. If it's who's going to put it in their yard, then clearly they're most impacted. When we're planting on properties, it's very difficult to have renters be involved because they're not the owner of the property. The owner has maintenance. So it just, to me, it triggers all kinds of questions about how do we determine whether we're working with those most impacted? I, I clearly know how to do a community organizing campaign and work with the community. I just don't know how we're going to use that measuring tool with those most impacted.
I hear you. Councilwoman Cercy, did you want to add?
Yeah, yeah, because I, I think I was the one that added a lot of the gobbledygook in the other definition that will need to be refined. Um, I, I, one of my concerns when I read members of the community is I became, um, concerned that we may have what we typically have in the city, which is residents that are predominantly in wards one, two and three, who are actively engaged in things such as the tree commission and the committee on the environment, coming together and deciding on the types of trees and where they should be planted, as well as making decisions and lobbying for, um, tree placement in certain parts of the city, um, where we typically do not have the same level of engagement. I would encourage us to be bold and to come up with other ways of trying to engage, um, for example, our renters. So if we are planting trees in the right of way and renters, and we know that renters often either don't have the rights to make any improvements, or, you know, maybe we need to tweak some of our letters to make it very clear. If you rent this home, please, I don't know if we do that already, but if you are currently renting this property or do not have the ability to make decisions regarding tree planting, please contact your, your landlord, or we are happy to do that for you. Um, it's things like that that might actually help to better engage those residents that typically are not engaged in, particularly as it relates to tree planting. I think for, um, the business community as well, um, I think that's a huge place where we may be missing out on outreach and kind of working with some of our commercial property owners and really leveraging our business community to lobby on behalf of their patrons to have more tree cover in some of these large parking lots. So, um, I, 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 for me, that was when I saw members of the community, I think we often do ourselves a disservice because we think that we're talking to the community and we really are talking to a subset.
Sure. Well, I, I certainly understand that. I'm very sensitive to that. I, I would think that perhaps we could focus the language about outreach in the areas where the trees are proposed, that that's where we're focused on, uh, community engagement.
Yeah, this is, uh, the, the intent, the original intent before the, the working with part got added. The original tent, intent was actively work to increase, you have to, you have to increase tree canopy somewhere to make up for what we're losing, um, through death and, and removals. So target that to those areas and then include those, those who are most affected, most impacted by that. So, so that's the, it's two, two parts. And maybe if we all agree, we can just have someone clean up the wording between now and next Wednesday, rather than.
It's a good idea because I don't think we need to draft.
Right. I mean, I, I, I hear, I think we're all on the same page. Right. It's just how we say it. So it's not saying most impacted because that, how we measuring that, that's a really good point. But it's saying that when we are talking about planting trees or maintaining trees in a specific part of our community, those members in the, that part of our community have the say in how it's going to happen.
Right, right.
So however we want to say that, that's what, that's what we want to say. Right? Okay.
Can I just say one more thing about this bullet point? I think it's a, this third bullet point in the first resolve clause, really, really important one because, um, for some people who might say, well, even saying no net loss is not a, exactly a, you know, wonderful call to arms. It's, it's kind of like, we're, we're just trying to stay where we are. But this bullet point gets to the point, to the extent we can, we're looking for areas within the city to not just sit on that level, but to actually increase. And the focus is going to be on areas within the community where, um, there has been an inequitable distribution of the canopy. So this, I think, gives us the, the, the leverage and, and the sort of place where the motivation will come from to, when we can go beyond no net loss. And I think that's a key, a key portion of, of the whole resolution.
If I can jump in for a minute here, um, this is not directly related to, to the wording here. It's more directly related to our, our, our concept of what we're aiming for. But I just wanted to toss this out because I thought it was really meaningful. Um, so in the, the research and planning, um, process to, um, to work on this resolution, I did some research on, um, looking for research studies that have been done in other cities that have done work on equity and trees. And, um, one of the resources that I found was from the city of Portland, Oregon, where they had a presentation on trees as a tool for equity. So councilmember Smith and I were talking through this a little bit, and he suggested getting in contact with the, um, the person, um, from Portland who did the presentation. And I did, and she sent what I thought was a really useful insight into doing this sort of work. So I just wanted to share her quote, um, that she sent to me in an email. She said, "I think an ongoing overarching challenge of our work is that it is, it is inherently top-down, a city program created for the purpose of meeting city goals, but we rely on our residents to make the program work. So we strive to make it as bottom up as possible. This requires flexibility, humility, an open mind and leadership that realizes and supports a multiple solutions approach, rather than presuming." rather than presuming one size fits all. I thought that was just really good advice and, and something I think we can try to utilize in, in our work moving forward.
Alright, so we'll fix the wording on that. I imagine adding and increasing efforts to support and maintain existing trees that works for folks. So we're not just talking about planting of trees. Again, just adding shared in front of responsibility like we had earlier. Um, and then this bullet, I think I need help on this bullet. There's a lot that got added to this next one. Alright, so we have a focus on addressing inequities in distribution of trees and tree benefits citywide through identifying specific locations for focused planting and attention. Working with those most impacted in the community, including property owners, renters, and businesses. And then I get the identifying city processes such as petition-based sidewalk request processes that might per- perpetuate inequities in the tree canopy. Should this be another?
It could be another, I, I was, I crammed a lot and I probably should have broke it up. So part of the language, you know, um, for me, I, I kind of felt like we're, the, the current resolution put a lot of onus on the, the property owners and, but we don't quite define who we're trying to reach. So that's why I thought it was important to call out, like, property owners, renters, and businesses, and really trying to work with all of them. Another thing that I've come to realize is that we have a number of, and this is something we've talked about before, but petition-based processes that typically go along with things like tree plantings, which typically would lead to certain streets and neighborhoods that maybe you don't have people who are knowledgeable about the petition process to perhaps miss out on opportunities to have plantings in addition to some of those sidewalk projects. So one of the things that I, I was trying to put in this document, which we can clean up and cut a lot of that middleman out, is that we might want to look at our processes that are tied to tree requests and plantings with some of our other pro- processes to make sure that those processes in and of themselves are not contributors. So, um, it could be, we just make it about looking at city, just a review of city processes that might, you know, perpetuate inequalities in the canopy. But I, but for me, that was, that was a big thing, like, making sure that we're looking at some of the other processes that we have, because people who don't know won't do, and if they don't do, then they won't have. And then I think a lot of the other gobbledygook was, um, really trying to call out the point that, um, at least in Ward Six, a lot of, a lot of the reasons why we don't have tree canopy is because we're dealing with University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue and very little space. And a lot of commercial space. So whatever we could do to work with, um, you know, the, the county in terms of those parks, where we've seen a lot of trees go down in county, on county property, and I don't know to what extent we're talking to them about plantings after those trees have fallen, because I get calls all the time about trees going down. And whether or not we are working with SHA as well as, um, Purple Line Transit folks, because we looked at some of their schematics, and they're not planning to plant a lot of trees along University Boulevard. So if our goal is to really try to increase the tree canopy, we have to look at those, those factors as well. So that, it was a very long, gobbledygooky way of trying to address all of those different things. And I didn't know where to.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we might want to break that out into its three separate pieces. Because they are really very different pieces. And, and to your point, Talisha, on that second issue, we don't have a petition process for trees, but what the council may want to do in this resolution is identify what type of process they do want to see for us to select locations for trees. Because what I'm reading from this is we're to look at the places with the fewest trees, and that's where our focus is going to be for the next 10-plus years. And so I, I think it would be helpful to make that clear if I'm understanding that right. If I'm not, then we need to add language that, that clarifies that. Because what I'm seeing is we're to look at the places in the city with the fewest trees, and that's where our efforts are going to be for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me. I guess one question I have is, you know, our process right now, when we have sidewalk requests, are they typically, you know, tree plantings, are those things that people can request? Or is it something you just naturally do together? I guess that's my question.
Uh, we have a requirement with the sidewalk process to replant the trees that we remove for the sidewalk. So that's its own separate process that's not included in the tree fund money at all. It's paid for out of sidewalk funds. So that's a, a principle and a commitment from the city to match the current code, uh, tree ordinance language. If we remove a tree, we have to replant based on our current criteria. So that's its own separate piece that the city's holding itself accountable, the same rules it applies to residents that want to remove a tree. Uh, separate for that is the city's annual tree planting. So the council identifies a budget amount each year, and then it's up to the arbor store, in the past, it has been up to the city's urban forest manager to determine where those trees are going to go. And so that's typically done by a little bit of a sidewalk survey, their own opinion about where things are missing, or where they, you know, where they have taken trees down. Uh, and then there's also requests, you know, they routinely hear from residents who say, hey, I'd like some trees on my street. And so they just jot it down in their file that says places to plant trees. So we don't have a very formal process. We're not doing analysis of available tree box spaces. It's, it's really just a, you know, seat of the pants kind of thing from the staff person who's in that position of determining where to plant the trees.
Yeah. And so I would, I would, I would say that I think your, your thinking is right in terms of planting where the trees need to be planted. But, you know, I, I didn't realize during our last, um, process with the trees and the sidewalk projects and the last tree plantings in Ward Six, that once people became aware that there were trees available, we had some people who said no for various reasons. We had a lot of people that just came out of the woodworks in terms of saying, yeah, I'll take one now. So if it is the case that the process is, like, it's, it's there a way for residents to know, particularly in the areas where we don't ha- we need trees planted on private property, we don't have enough, we, you know, is there a way to kind of encourage or get residents to know that they can request the trees, if that makes sense at all? Because I, I had a lot of residents who had no idea, and it was just this mad dash before their trees were scheduled to be planted, even though they had received letters. And I, Daryl, you, you sent them out. A lot of people just did not read them.
Multiple times, and planted flags, yeah. So maybe instead of, uh, Councilwoman Circe, maybe instead of saying specifically calling out the, the petition, the sidewalk, maybe we just say, review city processes that might perpetuate. Can we just, should we just leave it broad enough? Okay.
And this is, can I just make a, that's good. And can I make a suggestion that some of these are broader principles and some of these are specific actions? And maybe we could put the specific actions in the section on actions to continue this theme of focusing on addressing inequities, and then here's some specific things to do.
So that's the next section?
That would be the next section. We don't have to move it right now. I'm just.
I just want to make a note, because I will forget that.
Make it a point, uh, i- if that, if people are amenable to that, and then, then that might go with the the next few, because the Maryland National Capital and SHA are, are also specific.
Councilmembers, may I just ask a question, though, and, and I get, I think this actually goes perhaps to, to Daryl Brathwaite. How much of, how much of specifics need to be in the resolution and how much are to be in a plan that implements?
That's right.
That's, I think that's the question. And, and, and there are some things where it's very helpful for the council kind of to agree on some, on specific steps. But it, it may be that it's, it's more appropriate to put some of this in an implementation plan.
It may be, but if it's, if it's important to note in the resolution, then it should probably be moved down. And I, I think some of these probably should be noted because they are so different from current practice. Nothing against anybody who's been currently practicing or, or practicing in the past. But these do set, do suggest a, a different direction. So I think they might, might well be in here, but, but maybe we should go on and then see how how prescriptive it, it, it turns out to be, because, because we're not trying to write the action plan in the resolution. I completely agree with that.
I, I just would like to say one more thing to keep in mind. Uh, the city has a lot of control over what it does on right of way. And by a lot, I'm, you know, using quotes. It has less control, uh, over what it can encourage people to do on private property, particularly relative to trees. We can sweeten the deal, we can incentivize it. We have virtually no control over what state highway park and planning, uh, do. And they're, you know, they have many other pressures in terms of funding and programmatic things. I don't really, I mean, we can certainly have as a goal to continue to talk to them and work with them, but that is, um, kind of an entire different avenue and a place where we'll have, and maybe I'm just being too pessimistic, very little ability to influence or affect.
One thing I will say, though, is when we're thinking about the tree canopy for some parts of the city where we don't have city parks, we don't have city green space, we only have county green space. So if the goal is to have this no net loss, and we have parts of our city that are predominantly absent, that even if we had residents plant a bunch of trees on their private property, without collaboration with the county and without working with state highway, it's not going to be feasible for us to necessarily meet the goal. Um, and, and I, I do just want to be honest in saying that, because, because it's, it's for, for, particularly for Ward Six, it's true. We have huge commercial space. Most of our green space is county space. I don't know, other than, you know, making everyone plant 10 trees, I, I, I'm struggling if we don't call out the need to work with the county and to work with state highway, where we're going to make up the trees. Now, now that could be, you know, different for other wards, and I defer to, you know, Councilmember Siemens and Smith about their space. But, but I will argue for Ward Six, it's, it's going to be hard if we don't focus on making SHA and making, you know, the county do more, you know, in terms of replenishing those lost trees in the, in, in the parks.
Councilwoman Circe, the other, the other aspect here is that we've not really made that part of our, any of our lobbying efforts. You know, there, there'll be, it'll be a part of a discussion that we have with folks over the Purple Line. It'll be discussions, you know, on a particular site visit, but it really hasn't been a list of the, of this part of the city lobbying so far. So I think that's a very strong point.
And I would say also, I mean, we're, we're talking a lot about, um, we're talking about the bikeways in New Hampshire later this month, I think, and we're talking often about the various steps that would be taken to convert New Hampshire Avenue into more of a Boulevard-type route. And that will certainly be, uh, that will certainly mean working with state highway. And so I, I think Councilmember Circe is right that there will be opportunities, even if it's challenging. That's a potentially fertile area, and, and we, I think it's helpful to mention it.
And they have incredibly rigid standards on where they'll plant trees and, you know, particularly with state highway. I'd also just point out, based on our LiDAR study, the parklands that the park owns are our highest percentage canopy. So those are already kind of maxed out. Uh, now, obviously, we're having losses and we need to make sure park and planning is replanting. But those are the parts of the city that get us to our current upper 50 canopy cover. It's really those parkland channels along Sligo and Long Branch. So those are our heav- heavily forested areas of the city, and, and we get the benefit of that in our canopies to, uh, count.
Okay, we get to move on now? Alright, so we're in the next section. And I think this first one, we've already talked about. The advise the council on recommended needs to reassess the tree canopy baseline and implementation efforts and funding levels. Then we added seek opportunities for collaboration with nonprofit organizations, institutions of higher learning, community groups, and other government agencies where there are opportunities for collaborative efforts to achieve our goals. Sound good? I just, and I just moved down the other two that we just talked about. Alright, so this is, this section then is all good. Alright, then, the next section I added some, and some other folks did too, be a further resolved that the council direct staff by January 2021, so this coming January, this is new, to provide an assessment and a multi-year plan that are in line with the goals of this resolution to revise existing programs and structures and target planting efforts, both public and private owned toward actions that are most effective at promoting robust tree canopy and address racial disparities in current efforts and that otherwise exists with respect to tree canopy coverage within the city. So it's to have a plan. The next part of it is develop a pilot project that in collaboration with those most impacted in the community in areas of lesser tree cover, including renters, single-family homeowners, multifamily building owners, managers, and commercial and institutional property owners, managers, for effective methods to maintain and increase tree health and coverage. And provide recommendations of how the current tree fund may be restructured to help fund a pilot project and other tree planting and maintenance efforts, including financial assistance to low and moderate income residents for such purposes. That sound good, this section?
I have a, a major question in the beginning where you say, provide an assessment. That has a very specific meaning to me. So I don't know, and, and it's not something we could do by January 21. So what is it that you're looking for in assessment? Is that a, a tree inventory? Is that a, what is an assessment?
That was language that I just moved down from an earlier draft. In my mind, I'm looking for a, a plan, not necessarily assessment, so I'd be okay taking out the word assessment.
Great. Yeah, I, if I can jump in, I, I agree. I think that's the intention. I, I mean, I think with assessment, we were trying to get at the, the idea that it would be a maybe review is a better word, a review of the existing policies and, and procedures and, and probably we have revised existing programs, basically a plan, but based on some analysis of, of what has been done and is being done.
Yeah, I think best to just focus on a, having someone lay out a multi-year plan to reach the goals in the resolution is really.
Yeah, because we say revise the existing programs, look at, like, we pretty much spell it out there.
Yeah, uh, two things. One, when the word assessment was selected, all of that other stuff wasn't in here. So, so yeah, I, I think either review or just say, go straight to plan. That's fine with me. The second thing is a little more specific. There was language in here specifically looking at the issue of how the city will address the gap that we're going to talk about between the number of tree, trees required for replacement by individuals and the number of trees you need to keep a healthy, to, to maintain canopy. So rather than belabor the words on that right this moment, let's just make a note to put that back in and wordsmith it later, once we see how we come out on the, um, on the replacement requirements.
Alright, so why don't you, Councilwoman Deva, why don't you make a note that that's language you're going to add then later?
Okay. Alright, and that is, um, I think it's line 145 and six are, that are crossed out right now. So that would. for for anyone who's following along, that that's the spot I, that's the phrase.
I thought it was a little higher up than that, Cindy.
Well, the version I'm looking at it.
Okay, all right.
Well, and I I it may be higher up in this.
I think it's one thirty-five and one thirty-six, isn't it?
I I don't know where it is now. I I the the one we we had this afternoon.
I think it's targets planning efforts, both public and private toward actions that are the most effective at promoting robust tree canopy, which is in one thirty-five, one thirty-six. I I think that unless I'm misunderstanding what you're referring to.
No, I I think this is the part, there was a a phrase there that there was some discussion about keeping in or taking out. And I think um we could just work on some phrasing to add back, add something and related to that for the the before the vote and have people consider it.
So we want to add something. Need to to um fill the gap. I'm going to put, fill the gap.
Sounds good.
You all remember what that means.
Maybe too late tonight, but I um, it would be helpful to me to understand what the council's thinking about when it includes uh wanting the city to support effective methods to maintain um maintaining uh tree planting and maintenance efforts. It's obvious what planting, tree planting is. I'm not sure what the council is looking at for the city's support for private property owners for tree maintenance. I mean, are we talking about education sessions? Are we talking about group purchases of maintenance work? Are we talking about workshops? Um, are we talking about pruning? I I don't know what what the expectation is there for.
I think it could involve a lot of those things, but it would be dependent on the budget and other things, which we'd want to hear from you about.
Well, and also, it it's a very different animal when you're doing maintenance on city right-of-way trees versus trying to cajole a private property owner to allow us to do maintenance on private. I I just don't even know how that would, I I don't even know what that would look like.
I think it would, I think it would be useful for us to just get some some thoughts from you in terms of what might be useful to encourage improved maintenance. That was sort of what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think there's a lot we could do on education, um, and outreach and basic education. And uh, you know, I could certainly envision that if we're actually talking about, you know, boots-on-the-ground maintenance. I have a much harder time envisioning what that could be.
And I think, I was, I was going to say, I think this goes, for me, it also goes back to something Councilmember Smith um brought up last week, which is as we get into this and figure out what a pilot project may look like. I mean, are there subsidies to provide people? Are are there other things support people need? Um, so I, yeah, I I'm not sure how to define what that is yet, because I am not sure for those folks who turn down trees or don't want them and exactly what is the reason and is there something that if we could do with it, which it within our budget, within our capacity, that would make them feel like, oh, yeah, now I want a tree and I can, I can take care of this tree? Um, I just don't know what that is.
I also think that's, you know, we're, we don't have to devise the plan right now. The plan will include some of those things and the plan will include options. And Public Works will say, what Braithwaite just said, we're not sure how to do these two things over here, but here's three things we think we can do. And then the council can say, we really want you to do this fourth one, too. And she'll say, we're not sure we have the budget for it and we'll work it out. I just don't think we can decide tonight what those components will be of a.
And maybe, I'm sorry, and maybe the word isn't maintain, you know, over the next couple of days, maybe there's maybe there's another word, maybe maintain is too specific. Um, so we could think about that.
Yeah.
But that's because I think I was thinking of maintain in a very broad sense. I wanted something in addition to planting. So it wasn't just we're planting a tree. But it's like, how do we make sure that's a healthy tree, that it like survives the first summer, that it like, you know, that people aren't afraid then of the tree as it gets bigger, like all the things that we hear. Um, so I put that all in the word maintain, but maybe that's not the most of the best word for it.
And along those lines, I had some conversations with residents um about about this pilot project and what it might look like besides planting a tree. And we can talk about that at at some point um further, uh, not tonight, but um, but your but your question is a good one, so I hope we've helped you out a little bit there.
Okay, and then the other resolve is be a further resolve that the council will review the city's financial state given the COVID nineteen crisis by early October to determine whether to release funds um to on hold directed toward tree canopy efforts, some of which may be used to incentivize landlords and black and brown homeowners to plant and maintain trees on private property. Um, so this was, the intent here was to make sure that we provided you with um direction on what funds might be available. So you're not basically spinning your reels um and developing a pilot project and a multi-year plan for us just to then say you have no money. Um, so my intent in including this, um, yeah, was was that.
Um, this, this is, Talisha, I mean, one of my, um, I guess, questions for the Director of Public Works is whether or not um developing the the items in the um prior resolve clause by January is feasible if you were not to receive that part-time intern and those funds. Um.
Well, if the, it's really what what it's going to pivot on is how long it takes us to hire a new urban forest manager. Because that position is currently vacant. So until we have somebody in the seat and they get oriented, that is, um, you know, that's really where the, where the clock is going to start from. Um, we're already at July, so we're looking at six months. I don't know that that's going to be very realistic if we're not even doing interviews yet. So, you know, I'm several, probably a month or two away from actually hiring somebody. Um, which then whittles that down to four months. That's just not realistic.
Yeah, um, I I would encourage us to to talk about um reader um, changing that January twenty twenty-one deadline in light of um you know, the election and in light of um hiring and holidays and, you know, perhaps pushing that back. Um, I would, I would also, um, I I I know that I added the determined whether to release. Um, the fact of the matter is, we know that the the governor is making cuts, the county is making cuts. People may go back into lockdown as a result of Fourth of July fun that people have had. Um, COVID is is very real and will continue to impact the community. People are still out of work and we need to be prepared to have some very hard discussions in October about where money absolutely has to go. Um, so so I would encourage us to be more, not lose our desire for but make sure that it's rooted in real li- real, you know, that it's rooted in in real life. Because we're in the middle of a pandemic and onboarding, hiring, and our budget is at stake right now.
Um, and and in terms of the funds that are on hold, um, the intern would certainly be helpful no matter what. Um, the other was a thirty thousand dollar pot of money that was titled um
Right.
Implement the tree canopy goals or do an inventory, depending on the direction of the council. So I wasn't really seeing those funds as the funds that were going to enact this uh tree canopy resolution. I was really uh assuming that our tree fund were going to be the source of dollars to enact our tree canopy resolution.
Okay, so if we were, and it looks like um the mayor just pushed things back to March. But it looks like if you were able to hire and use funds that are already in the budget for the tree fund, we could at least get that the the plan done by March.
Well, we could certainly cost out the plan. I mean, I would, I'm assuming that that's going to be no necessary additional cost to develop a plan. That's going to be staff time used to, you know, develop that. Um, in terms of implementation, we'll have some dollar figures associated with what we think it'll cost. And then it'll be up to the council to determine whether they want to transfer funds from the tree fund into the general fund so that we could then expend them in the in the manner in which we we've laid out in the plan.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
So what, does March sound more realistic?
It it does to me.
Okay. I'm good with March. I I literally just pulled January just to have a date. I just wanted something like that we had a date in here, so I'm happy to put March. Um.
But one other thing, and you know, shame on me for being so dense, but I didn't realize until just tonight, talking through this, that we had goals uh principles and actions. So it would maybe even more helpful, and maybe there's others like me, that we can make that real obvious. And why are all these whereas is, because a lot of them are duplicative, or if you're not reading carefully, they sound like we're saying the same thing over and over again. So it would be really helpful if we could emphasize, here's the goals, here's our principles, and here's the actions.
Yeah, no, I didn't realize that either, Darrell.
Okay, so it wasn't just me.
It wasn't. I was thinking about that. I was like, uh, so, all right, yeah, it does say, I guess I don't, what's this one then? So it does say goals, principles.
Those are sort of actions, like, you know, conduct a reassessment and.
Okay. These are more actions, all right.
Activities.
You didn't listen to your presentation last week, I can tell.
Yeah.
In detail.
All right, I think we're pretty good on this. I'm going to we are voting on this next week, so I'm going to um tonight or tomorrow morning, I will circulate this to everybody and um, we need to clean it up and get it posted by um, by Friday. So I will circulate it and then if people can um take a look at it so we can clean it up some more and we'll get it posted by Friday, so we can vote on it next Wednesday. Does that sound good?
If I, if I can just be even a little bit more annoying on that, I I I would like to have as much language as possible um in the I in the version that gets posted on Friday. Um, but I don't want a lot of changes on Wednesday, because then we don't have time either in the public or in staff to be able to kind of think it through.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're pretty close on this. I will send it around. Um, great, all right. Um, it is late. Um, we are, I don't think we're going to get through everything we need to get through on um, the ordinance um this evening. Um, so I was looking at our four-week um look ahead and what it I would suggest is, can we discuss, which I think is the the most important thing, if we're still able to focus the replacement issue um, tonight to see if we can get further on that. Um, and then push the vote, the first ordinance um reading not um next week, but the week of the twenty-second and then second on the twenty-ninth. And then we can um post the other lang- we can work on the other language and get that posted. Does that work with folks? Okay.
I think that, I think that we can at least present the options on replacement and their implications tonight, and if people can discuss it, great. And if not, at least people can, will have the info and can think about it.
Right, and so I should pull up.
Yeah, maybe so, if you can figure out how to do it.
The the slides that you sent me?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you see the slides?
No, we still see the resolution.
Now, what do you see now?
Still the resolution.
All right, I'm going to stop sharing and then I'll I'll try again. Hold on.
There we go.
Now, what do you see?
Now we see the slides.
Yes.
Okay, so can we back up? Yeah, so we can just, yeah, there, there. So just one more, back one place. So just to remind everybody, because it's late, that what we talked about last time was uh that to maintain the canopy, um regardless of exactly how you define the baseline, to maintain the canopy that we have now, we need to replant enough trees to replace those that die or are removed. Um, we decided, we proposed to expand the no replacement requirements for trees being removed that are dead, they're a hazard, they're impacting a structure, that's all already true. And then inactive decline. So we're expanding the type and number of trees that would not have an individual replacement requirement when they're, when they're removed by the homeowner.
Um, Cindy, now, um, we do require replanting for impacting a structure. It's just at the lowest percent, so.
Okay, so.
That proposal that you are making is to not do replants for those impacting a structure, as well as those inactive decline.
Yeah, I knew that. I just read it wrongly, because it's late. Um, so, and no changes to half the replanting requirements for undesirable species. That encourages people to remove those species that, well, anyway, we can keep going on. Um, and higher percentage replanting requirements for healthier trees. So the the next slide shows the chart that we showed last week with the existing and proposed recommendations, the numbers, six to fifteen on the one column and then on the second table, four to nine, et cetera. Those are from that tree rating chart that was revised, that rates the health and quality of the tree that's being removed. That allows you to say it's it's dead, it's poor, it's whatever quality, which then triggers the percentage requirement. So if we go to the next slide, oops.
I'm sorry, I messed up.
No problem.
Um, sorry.
There's the tree rating chart. Okay, so.
This side or this one?
Well, this is a review from last week again. The impact of the proposed things we, the proposed changes is is that um, it significantly reduces the number of required replantings. So that would result in long-term canopy reduction unless other steps steps are taken. So these are, we asked for some options. The the first one is is the one you saw last week. What is actually, what actually was required um, based on permits from April twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. The second bullet, our current proposal, you saw that last week, too. Um, and then we asked for the options, uh, one-for-one replanting for those trees um in the lower, lower end there, the dead declining impacting a structure, et cetera. Um, we asked to see if you slightly increase the percentage of replacement for trees in that middle category and in that top category. So um Darrell has done an excellent analysis based on the applications uh that actually went uh were reviewed. Not all of them went all the way through to completion, uh but of the ones that were reviewed, the the hundred and twelve proposed removals in that last year, this is the res- the impact of the different options. Um, Darrell, do you want to say anything more about this?
I think that captured it. I just want to remind. I think that captured it. I just want to remind folks that these were of the applications that were preliminary approvals. So they weren't waivers. These weren't dead or hazardous trees. These are those that went through the permit process. So there were more trees than those that got removed, but these are just focused on those that had, where a permit was applicable.
Right. And so the ones that were dead and were quote waivers, they're not in this.
Right.
That's not changing with what we're proposing to do now. So no point looking at that. Just focusing on that categories that are changing. Okay, thank you for that. So this is really, this is really the guts of it. If people want to ask questions or discuss any of these options.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, and maybe Ms. Braithwaite can answer this. So this says, if I'm getting it correctly, and, and you know, you can look at it a lot, and it's dense, but, so there are 112 proposed tree removals, and the replacement category was, replacement number was 382 for that. Now, we know that all 382 of those were actually planted in that same, in your period. Some of them paid, may have paid the funds instead of doing the replacements. Is that right?
Yeah, we have that information as well of the 382. And Cindy, do you have the sheet in front of you? I think 200 and, it was 85 and 151. So 85 trees people agreed to replant and 151, they paid the fee and lose. So a total of 236 of those 382 actually went through to the end of the process and got permits. And so there, the equivalent of 236 replant equivalents was the end result from the total of 382.
And so the, the reason that was lower was because some people decided not to do it in the end, is that?
They didn't, they didn't pursue it. Yeah. And I've looked at the numbers because my initial assumption was, oh, well, if it was a big replant requirement, those are the folks that didn't decide to go through. But it was actually all over the map for trees rated very low with just one replant required to trees that were rated very high with as many as 16 replants required. So they were, it was all over the map and it was pretty evenly distributed among the ratings of trees. So it wasn't just, you know, trees in poor condition or trees in great condition. It was there. I could not see a pattern in, decided not to.
These data suggests then similarly that if we ended up with 129 replacements, that some subset of that would be what would end up, in all probability, actually being.
I think there will be some drop off though, with your current proposal, given that you're not requiring replants for those rated four to nine, or at least, you know, at the current proposal. I think, I think some of those will then, you know, will have fewer folks that choose not to if they have a tree in that condition because there would be no cost to them to, to remove it. They applied, they get the permission, they wouldn't have to replant. So I think there'll be a slightly higher percentage of folks that go through to the end of the process.
Again, out of that 112 proposed removals, something like one quarter of them didn't go through.
Yeah, that was my recollection as well. 19 or, I don't know.
But what's the correct, what's the correct number for the gap, really? Is it the difference between 382 and 129, or is that not it because some of those weren't done?
Well, at least we're comparing apples to apples with the 129 and 382. So we're taking them all across the board through the process, not looking at those that didn't decide to go to the end. So those are, those are comparable, 129 in the current scenario and 382.
In each case, whether.
And because some of the proposed, some of the permits, Peter, were for more than one tree, you can't just say, well, how many didn't go, how many?
Multiple trees, right.
Councilwoman Kostick, do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. Two things. One, I just wanted to note to people that there is, the spreadsheet that Ms. Braithwaite put together is available on the, I emailed it around to, to people, but it's also available on the agenda page, if anybody wants to take a look at that. Second, I just was wondering, one of the things I keep struggling with and thinking about this is what the trees are actually like and why people are removing them, both at the lower end and at the upper end. So can you just sort of give an overview of what is a typical tree rated at number eight on the scale? And why, why is that person removing that tree now rather than waiting for it to die? Like, what is their motivation for removing it, I guess? And then similarly, you know, a tree rated like a 19, why is, why is someone removing that? And what is their motivation for doing that? Because I think that, to me, is sort of relevant when we're considering whether we want to require somebody to replace or not.
Yeah, I, I am really not prepared to answer that, though I can be. What I would need to do is go back to that full detail list and take a look at what the trees were. I think in some cases, people consider them nuisance trees. For instance, mulberries, we get a lot of requests for removal of mulberries, which are considered an invasive tree because people don't like the berries on their walkway, on their car, slime, whatever. So there's a lot of, we get a lot of requests for mulberry removals. There's also requests for, you know, they, they want to do something different in their yard. They're putting up a swing set. They want to move their lead walk. You know, there's some issues like that. And then there's others where the tree is either, you know, starting to decline or needs some maintenance work. And so when they're, when they're weighing the, the odds of, do I pay, you know, 500, 800 bucks to get this tree deadwooded? And then three years from now, I got to do it again. And three years from there, I got to do it again. Or do I just want to remove the tree, spend $2,000 and have it down? So I think some, some folks are motivated based on that type of, you know, kind of their own version of a cost benefit analysis of the ongoing maintenance costs versus just a one-time removal.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, it's really, we could look at that sheet of the detailed, each tree and, and its rating. You know, I, I don't know whether we'll be able to come up with some general rule of thumb about why people apply. I mean, the thing that jumps out to me when I look at that is there's a lot of mulberries on that list.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I, I mean, I, my approach generally has been that I think we probably want, I think it has, I mean, it's the general concept behind the, the staggered approach currently is that we, we want to have a higher replanting at the higher levels. And so I'm, I'm interested in the 2% and the 4% proposal and then the increased numbers there. But I also just wanted to understand what, what that would actually mean in terms of impacting people and why they're removing those trees.
Harry, any other questions for Ms. Braithwaite or others? I think this looks like a, it's going in the right direction. Thank you for sharing the materials there. I would be, I'd rather move in this direction than in what we have in the current proposal. Because I, given the current proposal, I see there's, there's just absolutely no way we're going to fill that gap in terms of planting trees. If we put the, put it all on our own city program. So I think this, moving in this direction looks appropriate. And I'd like to voice my support for changing what we have in the current proposal. So it looks like this.
So i- am I correct that if we add up the 129, the 66, the 62 and the 13, that gets up to like around 250 or so? So the gap, I'm sorry, how many?
270.
270. So the gap then is still about 100, right? As compared to the 382, is that right?
Yes. This is Cindy. I, I like the idea also of doing all three of these and still knowing that there needs to be a fairly active community program of repli, of, of planting and, and, and maintaining tree health beyond what we do now. But this gets us a lot closer to what is realistic for the city to do. So I, I like the combination also. Thank you.
The only other thing I'll add is, you know, that last proposal, which just adds 13 trees to bump up our replacement, it's now one and a half and 3%. So if we go up to two and four, you know, I just want to put out there that there will be folks that will be wanting to remove a tree in good condition, either for construction or other reasons, that will be significantly impacted by a 4% replanting requirement. So, you know, you could get into situations where someone is required to replant 16 to 20 trees for removal of one.
And you're saying that doesn't accomplish that much in terms of moving the needle because it only represents 13, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. And again, I mean, I don't know how, I mean, I felt like last year's data was as relatable as any other, but you know, each year could be a little different. But anyway, I just, I know that part of what's motivated the council to look at this changing the percentage has been the number of times you hear from residents really unhappy about cities' replanting requirements. So if we're looking at increasing the percentage, you will likely continue to hear from people unhappy about that.
And this is the, what you have here is the percent of desirable, right? Or all other trees?
Well, undesirable and desirable. So the lower number is the undesirable, the higher number is the.
Oh, right. Got it. Sorry, I was reading this wrong. Okay, I got it. I keep switching back and forth because I'm trying to.
Hey, can I ask another, another question? I also was wondering, in terms of our programs to assist people who might not be able to afford replacement or, and/or have a difficulty affording even the removal of a tree that is in bad shape, what sort of assistance do we currently offer or are there other opportunities to offer? And I'm thinking pretty much for the trees rated four to nine, since those are cases where people would probably be removing something because of the condition of the tree.
The way our emergency tree removal fund works now is it was funded at $25,000 and we use an application process. So if someone has an income or family income, 85% of the median income in Montgomery County, they qualify. And that has been defined to remove trees that are dead or hazardous. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't trigger for trees that were in decline currently. A council could change that guidance and we would, you know, implement the program accordingly.
Do you, um, do you have a sense, because I think we've talked about this a few times and I've heard it from some residents, do you have a sense that the, the tree ordinance and the restrictions reduce people's willingness to plant trees? I'm just wondering if, if there's a sense that people, you know, don't necessarily want to replant because they know there's going to be some restriction?
Yeah, I've certainly heard that, but I don't see that actually as a motivating factor. I think people sort of tend to be kind of, not hardwired, but either open to the idea of trees or anxious about the idea of trees. And, and it's not really, I don't think the city's tree ordinance influences decisions about tree planting. Now, obviously, that you can't say across the board. There certainly should, could be people that that would influence their thoughts are. But for our, for our purposes, I mean, your, your tree's got to be seven and five eighths inches in diameter. That takes 10 plus years to get to from, you know, an inch, inch and a half caliber tree. So it's a lot, you know, you really have to be thinking about a long-term plan if you're going to be, you know, making decisions based on 10, 20, 30-year, 80-year impact from the city's tree ordinance.
All right, do be, other people want to, we need to move on this. Like, I, I, I'm sorry. It is late. I cannot have another, like, two more work sessions on the tree ordinance. We need to make decisions. And so if not tonight, and you need to look at this, and we need to come to some closure on the tree, on the tree ordinance. We, you know, we've gotten a lot of input from the public on it. We've worked really hard on it. I know Councilwoman Dibala, Kovar and Kostick have worked very hard on this. And so I know it's late. We don't have to necessarily voice opinions on this tonight. Look at it some more, but this cannot be carried over till the fall. We have way too many other things on our agenda. Our city attorney has a lot of other things he needs to be working on right now. We need to close the loop on the, on the tree ordinance.
Well, can we say we'll just decide one way or the other next week?
Sure. That's fine. I just, I'm just going to push us to do that because every time we say we're going to decide, we don't. So I'm, I'm like, I really, I'm asking everyone to take a look. I will, as soon as we're done tonight, I will pass around the resolution. We are voting on the resolution next Wednesday. We will finalize the language on the ordinance next Wednesday and then have the two votes on the 22nd and the 29th. But I really ask that people come ready with final language and ready to make decisions and vote over the next couple of weeks on this. Good? Okay. Any other questions or anything?
I just would like to point out that there is a sheet that got sent around a lot when Casey sent that email earlier today with a few specific amendments on other sections that just spell out what we talked about last week. So it's actually amendment language on, on three areas that we talked about last week. Takes us a step closer on those issues for people to take a look at.
Great.
And if I, and I like to jump in on that, I think one of that has to do with the section on the city manager, which I've worked with the three council members on the language. So please review it.
And I, and if I can just add before we go, I am working on the language that I discussed previously and the city manager is working on it. And after consultation with Ms. Braithwaite, which I really appreciate, on these multiple large tree removal situations similar to the one we've had with Montgomery College. And so that, that should be able to be shared with people prior to next week. And again, there's a couple of native tree things that could come up in the ordinance also. So those are my other two assignments that I'm working on, just alerting people to anticipate those.
Great. Awesome. All right. I think we're good then. Just getting in right under midnight. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your work. And I really do mean thank you to our city attorney, Ms. Braithwaite, and our colleagues, Councilwoman Dibala, Kostick and Kovar. I know this has been a lot, a lot of work. It's, it's not straightforward. And, and every time we think we're getting to a place, like more, we get more information. So I, I do appreciate all the work that has gone into this. And I'm just going to push us to wrap it up in the next couple of weeks. So.
Work for me.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of the week. And I will share the resolution with you all right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye.